Second.
You're welcome.
Seven thirty, I'm on.
Not seven.
Sure. I mean, that's okay, because we're all here.
Yeah, we're all here, we can start.
Okay. Gang's all here, okay. Everybody can hear me, good. Uh, welcome to the uh, October uh, meeting of the town.
Top of us.
I'm gonna call uh, to order, and first item in the business, of course, is uh, when I finally get around to sharing it uh, the agenda, so I need to, I'll just show you the agenda, there's nothing different from what was on the um, what was uh, the draft, with one exception, I added an additional kudo, so. Are there any objections to the agenda?
No.
Bill, you're the complete. Okay, if there've been objections, the agenda is approved by uh, um, approved. Approval of minutes, we had two minutes uh, from, one from August, and one from September, um. And the motions to uh, approve for the minutes.
Uh, I moved to approve, but I just wanted to check, I hit and sent.
Yes, I didn't make that.
Yeah. I mean, one of the news was some.
Yeah, I haven't just made, yeah, it was just a technical.
Yeah, 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 there was nothing.
Well, then what did I say? I'll make this.
Yeah, alright, so I moved.
Your system.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments about the minutes?
Yeah, I had one, I had one comment. That, it was that, in the last, last month's minutes, this discussion about the um, Brooks who came in.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I thought that was misleading, what we said about his appearance, my, my, the way I recollect it, was that he came in, and before we began the meeting, he made a presentation. I wanted to ask him a question, it says in the minute, that we were allowed, council was allowed to ask him questions.
No, it's not the case.
Yeah, but this was in the minutes. And no, because I wanted to ask a question, and we were told, from the slate, so I think we should edit that, to make it more correct.
I do not believe you by uh.
Well, my comment on that was, uh, it said that there were no public appearances, but that wasn't public appearance. So there were two things that I said.
Did we handle it as a public appearance?
It's new as well, two different ways.
I think you just invited him to talk.
That's what I thought I did, because I invited him to contribute to the discussion.
Actually, you said is that we were not gonna, uh, yeah, he was gonna, uh, he was gonna present, and then we would talk about it later on, but the minutes don't reflect that.
They did it as a public appearance.
Now, we did that when I gave the summary of uh, I did a uh, preliminary um. Um, here, here it is, if you, if you look at it.
Mm-hmm.
So before we went on to uh, public appearances, I did this uh, bridge in the woods business, and here's where I put, if it's Hogan or Higgin, I'll fix the name. Uh, here's where he described.
So you don't have a procedure for letting random people come into our meeting and participate in our meetings? That's why we have public appearances.
Yeah, but this is out of an appropriate, he was speaking to uh, issues, like having a staff, a, a, a committee chair speak to the.
Committee chair was not a staff.
Well, alright, next time we have this, we'll have the council vote. I hear about it, I, I just.
What do you hear about, no, that's what I didn't hear about it, I, I don't, you know, there was
If somebody has.
It's perfectly appropriate that he say something, but it's important that we label it correctly.
I think it hurts, I see you.
As a.
That is a logic.
Of yours.
Under this.
Well, I don't want to trip the weight for him.
Well, if you do that, then only a three minute.
Yeah, yeah, three minutes, still up there, I mean, you said you timed it, right?
But why, why could, we, we, it was, it was on the agenda for us to discuss, why could this fee have?
Uh. Because he, uh, right, because he, he has a fee nice, a key um, involved in the key, but agenda.
Right, so I, I would have thought that we were at this, and later, that's what we love to be.
Well, yeah, maybe. He did, but he was in.
He went off, he left.
He left.
He left, we had a conversation.
Well, that's, that's why we were all shocked when he.
He left, we didn't, I think he was there.
Nope.
No, he didn't, he gave a speech.
I did check that.
No, he gave us, he had definitely left.
Yeah, thank you for.
Because he had other businesses going on, and he got up and left.
Yeah. See, that was, that's the only reason why I'm saying is that, it was, it was a nice, but anyway, I mean, it was a unique situation, difficult, and it was handled.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, don't have to labor too much.
If, if this, if it was routine, and we had somebody appearing on the subject, and we need to.
I, I just wanted to impress you that I read the minutes, that's what I said. No, I really, I like this discussion.
Oh, see how well, I'm gonna quit you on it. Okay. Um.
See what you've got.
Alright, but, 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 but did point out an inconsistency, because he did appear, and um, he was present, so the idea of appear, I guess, was present, and I did. But I'll fix that, Brooks will be in. Anything else?
Oh, nothing.
Okay, then uh, if there are no other uh, comments or conjecture corrections.
I'm sorry.
Right, just push down a little.
I was gonna start singing.
Um, okay, so the, the minutes uh, both minutes uh, accepted, as, as written with a modification, and I will make down the specifics. Okay, this brings us um, to public appearances, I do want to comment here. First of all, that uh, anybody appearing should note that the council discussion of some of the agenda items, and it's specifically indicated, uh, are expected to be deferred. So you are still welcome to make a statement on anything you wish, but um, you won't probably hear um, your particular aspect of it addressed if the council um, decides to defer a discussion, and, and the reason for the referral is to allow public comment, written public comment, other than um, appearance of a comment. The other thing is that the council will not engage in discussion with anybody who is, makes a three-minute statement, but may respond at the appropriate time, um, if it's on the agenda. Okay, that said, is there anybody um, who has uh, is here for an appointment there?
Yes.
With, is raising her? Okay.
Yeah, mine is, has nothing to do with anything on the agenda, I would just like, um, as a person who opens and closes the gate at Wood, at uh, Woodward Park, to request that the town get the gate fixed, it's a, pretty much a backbreaking uh, effort right now to open or close the gate, it seems to be li- you know, sort of the, I don't know, the uh, metal pieces that hold it up have sagged, or something has sagged, and the uh, gate drags on the ground, and it's very heavy to move.
It's in the queue, I'll, I'll just know, it's in the queue, well, we'll move it up one, one slot, okay?
Thank you.
We'll get done, get done faster.
Well.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Luke, for pointing that out, um, I, I just wanna point out to you that uh, and it, the, you're, you're welcome between council meetings to email Peter, myself, um, about anything like this, we are in the process of um, um, I, I think Christine plans to set up a um, mechanism go on the web, and make a request regarding maintenance or facilities. And that way, not, that will produce a record of it, and one will be able to indicate if it's been dealt with, or what's being done with it, and every, anybody who has a concern will be able to learn more about it. But this would be a good one for that. Any other personal appearances, Betsy? Betsy is.
Yes, yes, um, thank you, um, I'm here about the um, kiosks proposal, I have spoken to several people about this already, but I didn't get it in writing anywhere, but um, I, I feel that it's very important, or not now, it's very important that I'm yeah, sorry, that it's very important. The, the most important one in my mind is the one in the park next to the driveway there, that's the middle one, it's the one will be most seen, and I would request that the town consider buying a regular one, that one that's already there, isn't, you can't redo it, you want something with a, a roof on it, and that's really leak-proof, and that will take a two by three foot that matches the others. So I would really strongly request that the town go to go ahead and purchase another one for that location, because that location is gonna be much more important than any of the other single ones. It'll be seen more, that's my opinion, and I would, yeah, I would really, I don't know how to say anything more, and I won't waste any more time, but that's my very strong wish, and I've spoken to a few council members, I think, uh, and other people who helped, you know, decide on it, but it didn't get into the writing yet. So um, thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Anyone else? No appearances, no hands, no waving. Okay, then we'll close the public appearances, and we will um, go on to the September treasurer's report. Jean is here with some words about that, I think. Jean?
The um, income, you'll see, we have a new income line item, the fall festival. Um, that money was the fees, and that offsets some of the, offsets all the expenses that.
It's okay if you talk now, that one time when I was talking, it was when I really wanted you to.
That's it, I mean, you need to.
Can you mute them?
Yeah, sorry.
Um, so you'll see this expenses below, and there's a contribution, four hundred dollars, that was the women's club. Um, I think they paid for the clown, uh, that was in Summer in the Parks. Um, you'll see uh, the maintenance coordinator salary, we had not um, we, we have both Steve and Dane on staff to, um. You went a little too far, Tom, John, Dan. Um, if you go up to the beginning of the expenses, um, they did a huge amount of work uh, helping with the sprinkler repairs in July. Um, they worked longer and for more than what they asked to be paid for, but that is um, what that item is. And I um, also wanted to mention, you know, the sprinkler repairs themselves, down on um, if you go a little farther, the top of the next page, top of the next page, John, a little farther. The contracted contingency, we, that's the contingency that um, we had set aside for any emergency work needed in the hall, which the sprinklers have pretty much uh, used that up. Um, the only other item I kind of wanted to point out, the stump carving. Um, yeah, next page, keep going. Um, at the top there, um, that forty-five thousand um, is, was the town's match on the total nine thousand dollar contract, the other forty-five thousand, um, we use the donations that came in on the previous fiscal year. Um, and so those donations were basically sitting in our reserves, and so the balance of that nine thousand dollar contract came out of the reserves, it was the donation money. In the events of that two hundred uh, dollar, uh, my comment uh, was truncated a bit. Um, the outdoor movie screen was really only about ninety-five dollars, um, and then there was um, that, a, a megaphone was purchased, and we didn't, we don't really have a supply budget for events as a general whole. Um, so, that um, is why that's sitting there without a budget. And next year, we will certainly um, think in terms of the types of supplies that um, don't relate to one specific event, um, but can be used by all. Um, and that is about the total of all the costs I have to make.
Any uh, questions, your comments?
Yeah, I had an issue with, um, Jean, tell me to shut up, if you wanna talk about this at a different time, but for the gateway committee, this six thousand dollars that we requested, and I sent documentation to Jean, and the uh, sedentation pond at the end of Brown Street was put in that pocket of expense, and it wasn't budgeted. Because I asked for six thousand, and there's only six thousand in there, and there was.
There was the general two, two thousand in that six thousand for maintenance. Um, your request said primarily for split rail fencing, um, but I had used that maintenance word um, for putting it there.
Well, I know, but it shouldn't have been, it should, it's not, this is, this is the gate, this was just for the gateway, this wasn't for maintenance, and that's never, that's not part of what the gateway does, and I think we should just, yeah.
What, but, what line item are we talking about?
Okay.
In um, border identity, up much higher, John. Um, there.
It says. See, seven area, I mean, it's not a big deal, but it does, it does, you know, it was planned out for the six thousand. So if we can look at that, that's all.
Yeah, the, there is a contract contingency amount. We've used about half of it so far, sitting in parks. If that were, but that's not really part of parks. Um, there really was not a good fit, other than the fact that the sediment area is on the border of the town. Um, and it is a maintenance issue, um. And we can discuss at a later time, where we can move it, we can move it, the expense, we all have to agree.
Yeah.
Where, what is a, a more appropriate?
Okay.
Um, I, I think Peter's point is that uh, by putting this in the, in, in the border identity improvement bucket, it reduces the funds available
Mm-hmm.
for border identity improvements, and maybe because this was an unbudgeted expense, and um, it, 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 the worst case is, it just needs to be in, you know, as an expense that has uh, yet to be assigned, or um, because um, we did not include a category which automatically, which, 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 that, which, which this can be identified. And that's something to think about for the next budget. Um, but uh, you know, um, I think the point is that it, it, you know, it handcapped, the border, the six thousand was put there, not for um, the stormwater measure pond.
Mm-hmm.
So I think maybe um, with, with that um, being the fact, it ought to be put out either somewhere else, or simply listed as an unexpected expense, or unbudgeted expense.
Right.
And that, that, that line item, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, might be over the six thousand, and we know why.
Right, but it, it's.
So.
It really isn't, it really shouldn't be in border, I mean, look, it's a stormwater of maintenance.
Right.
It should be in a maintenance category somewhere, we, we, if we don't have one, we should have had to. And yeah, it's going to have to be, you know, absorbed somehow. Um, but, but, you know, putting it here is maybe convenient for uh, keeping your budget intact, at, at least in October. But um, but um, probably isn't representative of expenses, we're gonna have another one of those. All right, we, 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 we need additional repairs of the sprinkler system. We haven't, you know, that has to come out somewhere as well. Um, so I, I, I think maybe we can find a, you know, an un, unallocated, you know, un, you know, emergency maintenance, or something like that, that encompasses the entire scope of the towns. So, okay, the point is that uh, that I, I think Peter's made a reasonable point, I, in my opinion. Maybe Jean and I can work on, on, on putting this somewhere um, on the other, and Jean is correct. If, if it goes over, we, we'll have to, I think, we'll have to, you know, find the funds to.
Or, okay, but this is gonna come up again.
Yeah, I think pulling it out is, is more, more um, um, a fair way to do it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, we're in a reasonable shape, it looks like, so um, given, and given the um, the, how far we are in the year. Um, okay, I mean, motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Wait, no, it's.
Peter, second, okay. By the way, Rob is here, he is remote, and Mary is not present, she uh, is in a place where she cannot tell me. Um, all right, so all in favor of accepting treasurer's report, well, all right, five zero report is accepted, thank you. Um, okay, that brings us to the mayor's uh, report. Okay, we have, um, I've, I've added to the kudos, there were, there were a bunch of kudos that were, well, were uh, uh.
Er, er.
Did you want me to say anything about the sprinkler? I'm sorry, Chris has reminded me, there's one more item under treasurer, and I do want, if we're not going on the mayor's report, we're going on to the other uh, item under treasurer's report, which is Catherine Hall's sprinkler system.
Yes. Okay, so um, trying to sum this up really quick, I, I, I think everybody in town knows that we had some issues with the sprinkler system, we had to shut it all down last summer. Uh, fast forward two months, and the system is um, still showing leaks. Um, and a couple of our residents went into the attic again, and they found six additional leaks using what's called a soap. Um, we had um, guardian fire protection, our service provider come back out to the room, and uh, look for materials and cost estimate, we haven't received it yet. But then, we had another individual that came in and, and took a look at the entire system, and gave us a a ballpark cost estimate for what they would do for us, and that would be to replace the entire system. Um, and, should I show numbers, or should, I guess?
Uh, well, a little ballpark.
Ballpark, okay, so ballpark uh, to, to replace the system as is, like we have, uh, it's running around nine thousand dollars, but then if you wanna upgrade to a.
Ninety.
Ninety, yeah.
Ninety thousand.
Nine zero thousand, yeah, check that I said.
You said nine.
Well, nine.
I hear what you mean. I didn't understand what people thought of you.
Let's get those guys in here, I want. Thousand, yes, and, and then so they're saying that if we add another ballpark fifteen K, they could convert this um, uh, air compressor system into a nitrogen system, which would provide longevity. Right now, our system is, is um, as it's designed, runs eight to twelve years, and we're in the thirty-year mark, uh, with the nitrogen system, they're saying that you could get, you know, upwards twenty-five years plus, and they pushing numbers around fifty years, so it's something to consider, I, we also have, uh, as of today, uh, another uh, fire suppression company coming in Wednesday, to basically look at our system and, and evaluate, so we're gonna have some multiple uh, evaluations and, and, and cost estimates. So.
And the rea- the reason Chris is getting this piece of information is that um, uh, at the very least, the identified leaks will need to be repaired.
Correct.
Uh, and that's likely around anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars, would be my guess, maybe, yeah. Um, but it's uh, problematic as to whether the system will continue to develop leaks. Uh, and, 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 yeah, I, maybe I should remind everybody, if it falls below a certain pressure, then the system becomes inoperable, and the fire code calls for the leave hall to be closed. So that's a serious situation, um, the system, as Chris said, is thirty years old, it's already exceeded its its conservative, it's uh, conservative lifetime by at least ten years. So uh, i- i- if, if, if we, if it continues to develop leaks, then we really have only two options, one is, and he's gonna explore that with these companies, one is to just uh, um, continue to repair leaks, which are, by the way, almost entirely in um, the joints, but we have been told that the pipes, some of the pipes themselves are becoming very thin, or potentially developing holes. Um, that would be a repair scenario, uh, which would merely prolong current lifetime, but obviously, the system is, is, is in need of replacement. So if we have to replace it, however, um, if the expense is just to keep it operating, then our one estimate, maybe the next one might be seventy, or it might be a hundred and twenty, but anyway, that's way beyond uh, our budget stable and handling, in which case, and it's not that we don't have the money, we just would have to um, make, make that uh, undertake that expense, we'd have to do it, you know, quickly. Uh, I'm not sure how we would do that, I think what we, we, we would need to do would be to have a town meeting to a- attend our town budget, to um, do a, add additional funds, or this, if you will, capital project. If, if we can get it to extend, if we can extend the lifetime, you know, six months or longer, we might, as you can see, we might be able to find some funding to support this repair, we do have a historic building, Maryland Historic Trust, may be able to help identify some source that would aid in, in, in this sort of maintenance of the old building. That's just pie in the sky, that's possible, but we would need time to do that. So that's what this is all about, it's a heads up to everyone. For council.
I'd like to make one more comment, uh, one of the things that I forgot to mention is uh, we've already, you know, cut some holes in the ceilings, uh, six leads, additional leaks have been identified. Uh, and with um, one of the, with guardian, our service provider, uh, they indicated that, you know, they could, they could slide the pipes in from the old council room, but in order to do that, we're gonna have to take more of the, this, the wooden ceiling down. Uh, and, and that's a delicate, delicate uh, process. And so with that, and I think on Wednesday, when we have the other individual come in, you know, we're gonna see if that's what he also recommends, and if he does, then um, I'd like to go ahead and move forward to have the ceiling prepared, materials brought down, so then whomever comes in will be ready to get everything back up and running.
Yeah. So, okay. All right, thank you, Chris. All right, so now I can go on with mayor's. With um, back to uh, kudos, and well-deserved kudos. And I'll start with the most recent activity, which was Saturday, which I was unable to attend, but the Blue Sover event. Kudos to Eric and Lauren Selby, who have been organizing and producing this event um, for, what I understand, thirty-two years. Um, and this year, over a hundred grovers and outside visitors who were invited um, had a great evening of blue soul, and even some, I, I heard, so kudos to them for um, for uh, making this, by now, we can call it a traditional mountain event possible, and such a success. Uh, then, of course, to the organizers and the volunteers of the um, volunteering the Heart of Washington Grove Potluck Dinner, which was put together uh, uh, sponsored by the town council with the intention of um, uh, interesting uh, water range, or based uh, uh, residents who may not have been volunteering for any number of reasons, and to. Residents who may not have been volunteering for any number of reasons and to. Um, hopefully interest them in, um, making whatever time they do have available. The event was a big success, um, the kudos go to Peggy Borner especially and Patty Klein for planning. We were standing with Barbara, uh, who, who spearheaded it, and John Porter and myself. Arlie McCrea for creating the logo, um, and I was going to, uh. Just to remind everybody who, uh, hadn't seen the logo, uh, in fact. Uh, there it is, this is, it was a spectacularly, uh, attractive and, and. Spot on the event, uh, logo, so, um. Yeah, uh, that was great, um, and, uh. And then Ken McCatherine, who helped out with the audio visual aspects, all the commission and committee chairs. Who showed up to present, and of course, everyone who, um, after the event has now committed. To volunteering in some fashion going forward. Then the Fall Festival, which, uh, back in September, my fifth, um, also was a huge success. Um, yeah, of course, it was a festival that was previously started by Credit English at, at the church. But they declined to, to do that, so the rec. they took it over, especially Renee Molesnick. And, and the chairs, Lisa Beal and Christina Coe, and the host of residents who orchestrated. Uh, the whole thing, school trucks, cars, and many visitors. And lastly, um, kudos to Dave Cosson, and, uh, Cosson, I have another point for that. And the other contributors for their time and effort composing the thorough and compelling arguments for the town. To submit to the EPA in opposition to, uh, the Trump administration's, uh, effort to, uh. Reverse the endangerment finding that has been a key to, um, to, um. Reducing carbon emissions, all sorts of programs, uh, and regulations are predicated on the fact that. Greenhouse gases are pollutants, which is part of that finding, there was a. A hearing where our comments were submitted in writing. All right, that's it for kudos, uh, going to the Washington Grove Connector Pathway, a planning board, um. Uh, did have a mandatory referral, and, uh, the board, uh. Um, appeared overwhelmingly supportive, um, and, uh, it clears the way now. Depending on the actual statement, but, you know, I also wanna point out, it's advisory, although. MCDOT pays attention to the planning board's statements. Um, but it ma- it, it makes way, it, it clears the way to move to construction. Um, we, uh, MCDOT has received sixty-five percent plans and, uh, with the. That way, uh, work group is going to be meeting with, um, them to, um, review. Those sixty-five plans, I think next week, no, tomorrow, I'm sorry. So it's moving along with construction, they'll anticipate maybe, uh, before, at the end of fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven, anyway. Okay, um, well, I, uh, everybody should know now that our, um, stump art and woodwork part, the tree sculpture. Uh, has been completed by Colin Vale, and we, uh, uh, have, uh. Uh, planned tomorrow unveiling, uh, event. To where, where Colin will say a few words about his, uh, his artwork, and, uh, everybody's. There'll be, uh, something to write in season to read, and, uh, everybody can admire this, uh. I believe, ever significant public artwork in Washington Grove. And reminding you that that was paid for half by donations from residents and half by the town, so it was a real. Real grove, um, participation, um, effort, and I hope everybody will be as pleased with it as I think they. All right, I, I, I already lauded Dave Cosson and his, his helpers for the testimonies, I won't go over that again. Uh, it was submitted, um, it was signed by myself, so it comes from the town, and by Bob Moore from the Sustainability Committee. To, uh, at least put the right, uh, the right, uh, level of support behind that statement. The swim contract update, unfortunately, I cannot tell you that it's been done, but it's in progress still. And, uh, boy, in November, I expect to tell you it's a done deal, so that's all I have to say on that. The Poplar Trail Bridge, which was, uh, which was such a big issue at the last meeting, and continues to have consequences. The, the bridge has, as the council, um, um. Decided the bridge was replaced, um, pretty much exactly the way it was when it was removed. The intention of that was to ensure, to the extent we could, that. Uh, that Brooks Hagan, uh, would, would get his Eagle Scout certification. Uh, and that after that occurs, the, uh, the issues, uh, that. Were raised concerning the bridge in terms of use and safety would be addressed. And so that's, that's all the report, the process for which that. The circumstances on which that bridge occurred is also going to be addressed, in fact, a little bit further on there. Uh, okay, let's see, I duplicated my, uh, my stuff part, um.
I have a question about that, so. It's, and this is not, I, 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 this is gonna sound negative, but I don't mean to be negative here, because I think it's fantastic how it all worked out. But I just find it odd that, um, the town would pay for something. Where, with everybody's gonna see, but we don't know why it wasn't discussed ahead of time, what was gonna be there. Because we, with, you know, it's, it's just, to me, it's a gamble, and it's a risk. And we only, that's not a popularity contest, but we don't gonna be looking at this thing for, uh, trust me, great, but we're gonna be looking at this thing for the next. You know, twenty years or whatever, and it seems like in the future, when we do something like this, we should get more thought. To exactly that.
He didn't, he didn't provide any drawings?
I don't know, not that I know, you know, because everybody's been talking about the fact that it's, you know, it's gonna be an unveiling. So.
Okay, as, as.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a council, I don't know about it, I'm.
No, I, I agree that we, I mean, I love it, it's beautiful, but we should have seen it before.
That is not the way public part is generally done.
We knew, we knew a lot more about it than I think it has been expressed here. We knew it was going to be a nature theme.
Right.
The, the suggestions for it all had to do with animals of some sort, once I'm aware of, probably four or five or six of those.
But it's not unusual.
Be a representative thing, and I understand what's being said, it's, is, you know, should this obtain, the, the, the actual. Design been formally approved.
Yeah.
Uh, rather than just allowed, you know, just allowed latitude.
It all depends on what the intent was, there's oftentimes latitude given to artists to do whatever you wanna do. But there's also the precedent where a maquette is, uh, a model is made, and this is what I'm planning on doing, do you agree? So, it's all depending on what the intent was.
We, we did not address it in, in, in that way, um, I, I will add that the artist Colin Vale. Um, has, there are examples of his work.
Makes very good.
Around the county, and, uh, I'm unaware of any of them being.
No, there, there's.
Anybody being unhappy.
No, there's two, in my house in that area, there's two across the street, and there rails to trim, and, um, you know, they're spectacular. So, yeah, I, yeah, I'm just saying that in the future, would be, not just, we're not gonna be doing this again, for one. But it could be, you know, anything, just, you know, it's not anything, it's just process.
Right, Pablo should have gone through the process, the result could have been. We're hiring the artist, he has latitude.
Right.
We aren't approving the design, we're proving the artist.
Right.
We wanna see the design or approving the design.
Right.
Two ends of the.
Yeah.
Of a possible.
Yeah, that's on the end.
Yeah. All right, um, all right, then I just have a few announcements of coming, uh, coming events which, um, involve. Calls for volunteers, one is the East Woods Trail Maintenance, scheduled by the Woods Committee for October eighteenth. Uh, the Haunted Gazebow, early to the Grove on October twenty-fifth, and always use more volunteers. Um, you get a lot out of that one, because you get to let your, let your, uh, your Halloween spirit. And, uh, uh, the Parks Department is going to be doing a meadow tree planting in, uh. Operation with the Meadows Committee, October twenty-eighth, and volunteers are welcome to help plant those trees. Um, the, the trees are, are being planted to enhance the tree line, the back. Tree area, this is what's the focus is of, of the front, of the, of the. That's all I have, I should have gotten rid of this chair, sorry, and no, nobody likes to be looking chairs for twenty minutes. Okay. That's the end of my report, um, we're moving on to administrative matters, um. And the first one is the appointment of a trail safety panel, so this is the outcome, and outcome. One of the outcomes I mentioned, we'll be discussing, of the, uh, what I call the broohaha. A little more serious than that, uh, over the bridge that was not approved in, by the town. Through a, a town review, review process. But, uh, one of the issues was the safety of the bridge, still an issue, um, and as others pointed out at the meeting. Um, well, what about the safety of all the bridges and all the trails? So, I think we can address, we, we probably, that it's perfectly reasonable to address that, I'm proposing the appointment of a trails. Safety panel. Um, and for this, I already identified three individuals who have agreed to do this. It's shown here that the charge of the panel is to review service standards, I mean, bridge and trail standards. But also to distill them into the shortest list, and in other words, you know, these, these. Safety things go on and on, but, uh, I'm, I'm asking them to, um, to, uh. Propose standards that are appropriate to Grove Trails. Um, and, and the users that we have in the Grove who use those trails. So, um, it's not just a general safety, um, um. Um, task, um, those should then be proposed to the council as a trail safety po- policy. I'm proposing with council about that policy, and as well, and asked, would ask the panel to examine. All our existing trails, and where appropriate, recommend modifications, so they meet the safety. The safety, um, policy. So to do this, um, I've asked Patty Klein, who's the chair of the women, uh, I'm sorry, the Woods Group. Um, Chris Fresham, who, uh, is the sole member of the, uh, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Committee. And Steve Works, because of, of course, has, uh, a lot of experience with the trails and, and interest, and they've all agreed. To do this, um, all right, so I don't think I need approval to do this, uh. The council will come into play when they produce a report and a proposed safety, uh, trail safety policy.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, back to strengthening diversity equity, inclusion and belonging in Washington Grove. And this item Barbara's going to, um, you know, present this item, um. And it comes in two parts, kind of an evaluation of the event that was held a week and a half ago. Um, and also the, a, a next step. Uh, being, uh, being recommended by the, uh, the group, the, the D I B action.
Sure, so the, we had about eighty people attend the potluck, and you know, I, I sent, uh, the summary. But I didn't see it in the Dropbox, maybe it can.
I didn't know what he wanted to say.
Oh.
I, 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 I. No, I'm sorry.
Uh, so, you know, the committees were, and the. We had more people, we had fa- faces there who have lived here for a while, but we haven't seen for a while, so that was really nice. And, and some newcomers, and as Johnson earlier, we had people signing up for, for new activities, so that was really great. Um, and we had some sharing of ideas to vol- increase volunteerism. So, you know, you really went through a lot of it before town, so I don't think I really need to say much more about that. And then the other piece of this is, uh, reviewing the comprehensive plan through a D E I B lens. This was something that the chairs agreed to do at our very last D E I B meeting last March. Uh, we were all sort of a loose ends at the end, like, well, we wanna do something, and there are, there are a lot of things that we could do. What's would be the best thing to do, and it was agreed that we would take a look at the comprehensive plan, which. We've had for several years now, and have committees look at it. Um, now, they have this training now, that they're thinking about D E I V, look at it through, uh, through that lens. And we've already talked to Leadership Montgomery, who did our trainings last year, and they're, you know. More than wanting to come back and do that with us, so, uh, a few of us met, uh, a couple weeks ago, it was. Patty Klein, Eva, um, Paula, and me, and, because this is a small ad hoc group that grew out of. Our trainings last year, and so we thought maybe we would have a kickoff meeting in. January, and the idea would be, you know, and to remind everybody what was in the comprehensive plan, and, and that meeting would be open to. Town residents, and then at that meeting, decide the next steps. But, you know, possibly including just having the committees, you know, take off pieces of it and discuss it within their committees. And then come back for another meeting and discuss it, you know, as, as, as whole, you know, as a group, as a whole. So, that's kind of where that is right now, so it's really, it would be getting back to Leadership Montgomery. And setting up that very first meeting, which would probably be sometime in January.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put the summary, uh, also, um, discussion that you guys had in, in there.
Uh, okay.
And refer to it in the bulletin. Any questions on that? All right. Okay, next item on the business is ordinance, um. Twenty twenty-five dash ten, uh, zoning text amendment. That has been forwarded to the council, transmitted to the council, um, I've short, the short name I've given it is conditional uses in the commercial zone. And, um, that, because this is a zoning text amendment, um, there is a, um. A process which, um, the town, the council is required, um, to use in handling this. Um, and, uh, I'm going to kind of show it to you, but, uh, um. For, let me, let me deal with the timeline first, and then we'll deal with what, what the heck is.
Can I make the motion, um, before we finish? I'm making the motion that we approve, uh, Z T A, uh, twenty twenty-five dash ten. Can we introduce? We're introducing it.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm showing you a timeline.
Well, yeah, oh. So. But if we say, if we say, okay, I'll trust you, okay, so, introduce Z T A twenty twenty-five ten.
Okay, let, let, let me just remind everybody as to how, how this works, so here it is. Um, and this just follows the general format for, 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 um, amending. Our looming, uh, ordinances, the application is filed, that's what happened on October first, the. Final decision sent, uh, voted to send them to council, uh, on the thirteenth, council introduces the ordinance. Introduces, and then sets a public hearing date, there must be a public hearing. Uh, the, the H P C, uh, needs to review it and they will begin to do that, uh, at their meeting tomorrow. Um, the notice of the public hearing has to be, uh, provided and that would happen, uh, at them, at the bullet, in the bulletin. Um, and also we have to do it in, uh, newspaper of general circulation wise. I've, I've, if legislature. M M L asked the legislature to, to. Alter the requirements for this pub, the publication. I'm not, I don't believe it passed. Um, what they, what they asked for is to allow you to put it in a, you know. Not a paper of general circulation, which is the Washington Post, the Baltimore Sun, you know. Which, which is expensive. So, you know, doing two.
It's like six hundred.
Yes, yes, it's, it, you know, and if you do very many of these, it, it adds up in a hurry. But anyway, we do still have to publish it and that's, uh, and they have to be, one has to be at least fourteen days prior to the hearing. Uh, and, uh. Then the council conducts a, a public hearing. I'm going to see that the council set the public hearing for, for, before the next time council meeting, which we have re, had already rescheduled to the seventeenth of November. So that kind of works out well. Um. Um, then the council would enact the ordinance, the earliest that might happen, uh, could be the seventeenth. Um, but then, then, uh, i- if, if there was any, um, concerns would be in December. Um, and then you have to place a notice that this has happened and then it goes into effect sometime later. So that, that's what you see. Uh, by the way, much of, most of this was provided by the planning commission, by Georgette. To make it easy on me, um, to put this together. We do have a more. Um, a, another document which, which runs through these requirements from Charlotte Charleston. Which, uh, is very useful in, in creating these, these, these timelines. Okay, so that's, that's the process. So, but that's why I said to Peter, we can introduce it.
Yeah, I have this. Yeah.
We gotta approve it. Uh, so, uh, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, John, a second. So. My, you know, my recommendation to council is not to discuss it. Um, beyond anything sort of in a general sense, but. Um, does any of the council feel they want a, uh, short explanation as to what this? What, what the, um, zoning text amendment, how it change, sorry, how it changes. The zoning at the commercial park. Well, if no one.
I'd like to give kudos to, uh, our attorney who did a really wonderful job of this and to John. Which pains me to say, because I really wanted to make this simpler and, um, your vision of looking at a bigger picture. As far as, um, you know, the future, I thought that this, this really ended up perfectly. It's cause of some concern, so. I appreciate it. And George, of course, and the planning mission.
Well, without going into detail, maybe for those listening who, uh, uh, I'm sure have not read, read it and appreciated, uh, the, the. The, the changes that it proposes. It's, it's a, it, it, it introduces, it allows. A conditional rezoning. In, uh, connected to a renovation proposal, an actual renovation of the property. That's one thing it does. The second thing it does is it in, it increases the, uh, it expands the uses of the property. Um, so everybody will want to take a look at that. It's already been the subject of some. Input because the planning commission's been considering this for a while and those letters are in the, uh, the Dropbox folder for this meeting. The ones we've, we've gotten that I'm aware of. Um, it, another significant change because the, 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 uh, allowed uses are, uh. In general, it's, you can do anything. It's with, with only certain exceptions. And it, it allows the planning commission to approve the uses. Previously. The planning commission could approve the uses, but that's all they could do. If anybody objected that they weren't treated fairly. They had to take the, uh, the situation, the, 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 um. The property owner, the proposed tenant had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeal. They still have that option with this. Um, but the real, the, the first gatekeeper will be the planning commission in a, in a more, um. In the sense of, um, where they will have options to. Uh, factor in our comprehensive plan and, and other things in looking at those uses. So those are only a few, those are a few of substantive changes. Um, and although there is one other, it, it, among the uses allowed, uh, is a residential component. And before anybody says, good God, who would want to live there? That's not up to you or you don't have to live there. Um, but, uh, in the, the, the intent, I believe, was to, um. Provide a, a more mixed use of that property. Which would, um, impact the other uses if they were residential units. Man, you, you know, they're going to be small. There's not a lot of room. But it was allowed as an option. That's all.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, also my ninety-six-year-old brother approved it. She asks me about this all the time. And she pointed out that, uh, in an aging town where people have big houses and everybody's moving to Asbury or whatever. Uh, these are going to be smaller places and if they put an elevator in there, uh, it might be a place where some of our, uh, growers. Can, um, also stay in the Grove and more affordable way. So, you know.
I have a, a point of information, um, a, a question about the interpretation of the amendment. Uh, so it, it allows, uh, prepared food services without a kitchen. What is an example of a perfect, prepared food services? Um, business without a kitchen? Would that be like a? Did you say Starbucks?
Subway.
Subway, yeah.
They have, they use, you know, countertop zones. They do not use hoods. Um, stoves, um, or anything like that. They basically use prepared food.
Hmm, or, or like a, I was thinking Starbucks as an example.
Starbucks.
Starbucks is would have been my example.
Yes.
Okay.
Same thing. They don't, they also don't do it. They, that, what Starbucks, I'm, but what Panera does, I'm not sure about Starbucks. Maybe, maybe they don't do it. I know what Panera, Panera does is they take, um. Frozen. Uh, bread, loaves, and they bake them up. They don't get them. You know, they're not, I don't think they're delivered from elsewhere. Starbucks probably, that's only down in a few places, uh, to make their baked goods.
Yeah, they use all microwaves.
Yeah, it's only microwaves or coffee machines or, yeah. Yes, and, 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 and Rob, yeah, I, I, that was a very. Particular. Um. Use that was, um, felt, that felt the Grove residents would, were, were, um. Would, would make good use of.
Uh, no, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure. That, that, that was my understanding as well. I wanted to make sure. Kind of everyone had that shared understanding and that the people in, in the town who are listening and who care also understand.
But when I, when I wrote this, I didn't under, I, I thought it needed a definition of what kitchen is. Because that's a very broad term of what defines a kitchen.
Right. Um, it, it may go under a different name. I, I mean, a synonymous name, some sort of cooking facility. It has separate regulations by the county.
Okay.
I mean, there's. A significant, the additional regulations. For all this, nature of the hoods, safety is a big.
There's a definition of that someplace else.
Okay. Um. All right, we've introduced this. Now, setting the public hearing. Date, um, I propose that it be before the meeting, uh, in November. Um, we'll start the meeting. I think in this case, we ought to start the meeting earlier to, you know, it won't be one of these. Meeting open, meeting closed. I think there'll be some, some.
A few comments.
A few comments. So that question is, do we start, uh, do we do the public hearing at six thirty or at seven? Any feelings on that?
I think we should give ourselves an hour for this. Yeah, I think a lot of people are going to have a lot of questions.
Right. All right, so six thirty, November seventeenth, we'll do that. Got it. All right. Um, yeah, so the next item, uh, on the agenda, uh, and it's back on the agenda after being, uh, here. A bunch of months ago, and that is revision of the employee handbook that Jean.
Um, do you need to vote on the motion?
There's no motion. It was an introduction. There's no vote.
Peter moved to introduce?
No. If you.
Move to introduce.
Okay.
I, I should say.
It's automatically introduced if it's moved and. There's, you, you.
Don't look at me.
Well, meaning cannot refuse to hear and it's a, it's a, and, and introduction, they can vote it down. I think.
I think the motion should have been to approve it, but we just wouldn't take the vote. On approving it tonight because we have to have the hearing first.
I thought that, that would apply if we were discussing it. We, we, we're kind of doing a. This is a process, we're in the process. And we can vote on it, but I don't, I, I think this is just a, a step in the process. Introduce it, set the public hearing. Move on, you know, you know.
Because if we, if we voted on it, it seems like we don't have all the information, maybe.
Vote, vote on.
Vote on approving.
Well. Vote on approving.
Right.
But the motion could be made, I move to approve this, but we don't vote tonight because we don't have all the information yet.
Right.
And we don't have the hearing and we have the time limit we have to follow.
Well, what's the, yeah, what's the difference between that and just saying, but we, we're introducing it and then we vote?
And we have to vote to introduce something.
Yeah, you don't, right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm, I'll agree with that.
Then you do have to introduce it, otherwise there's nothing.
Right. Is that introduced? Okay.
So what are you doing?
Doesn't matter. We'll resolve the technicality, unfortunately. I mean, I can look it up if you want to wait. I'll, I'll look it up under the rules. I used to put them in here, but I didn't put them in here. If I have any luck, I have it back here.
That's still.
No, of course not. So I'll go. All right, well, uh, uh, I'll, we'll come back to it. I'm sure I'll have a chance to find, find the, resolve this.
I think it was resolved, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Or kind of.
Okay. Uh, the employee handbook. So I'm gonna, uh, thi- this is, uh, um. Something that, um, Je- Jean put together of her vi- vision and, um. The council, um, a few people made comments and I think Jean is going to tell us the, uh, any of the changes in status. And, uh, the council will actually decide what to do. So Jean.
Yep, um.
Before Jean starts, we need be, we need motions before we discuss things. So we need a motion to. Approve the.
Fine.
So I'll send you that.
The handbook, but we haven't seen the latest version, so.
Yeah, you have. It's the one, the one you received.
Received when?
Um, June, I don't.
Well, I don't think most of us remember what we read in June.
I have a, oh. If, should I ma- email it to you, John, to put up on the site?
The June, it's the Ju- the June revision of the April draft, right?
I had sent you the, uh, cleaned up version. It's easier to read.
You just sent it?
No, I can. I had sent it quite a while ago, but I can.
Yes, I, I think that's what I have. But go ahead, send it just to make sure. In any event, um. Look, if the council doesn't feel prepared to. I'm not trying to force this down anybody. It's just it's been on, on the back burner.
Right.
And needs to come to the front. But I don't think that it's a huge. Issue if everybody reads it and just points to the things they have questions about. I think we'll get through it pretty efficiently. Um. So, um, you said that.
It. It's the one that you circulated in the Dropbox, the oh-six-seven-nine-twenty-five.
That is fine. It's in the Dropbox.
With, with your and Jean's red lines, right?
Uh, 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 you know, once again. If you have some email and you can, you can confirm that.
But I thought you said you had new. Amendments to it.
No.
No? Is, is it June?
I think June was the one.
The one that you circulated is four months old. It doesn't show that it, it's a.
Did you send it, Jean?
Do you want the, um, cleaned up version where accepted the edits that were given to me?
Uh, as long as you can point to the edits that, uh. I did, that's fine. I'm seeing it. All right.
Just, I just sent it to you. Again.
Um, I, I moved to postpone consideration of the employee handbook. We, we shouldn't be.
I agree.
Like any of us are ready to deliberate on that. So I moved to postpone it. Until the next.
Okay, um.
Did someone second that motion?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Barbara.
All right, um, i- if we approve, uh, the, deferring it, I, I'll make a request to the council that it be. Kept in everybody's mind that. I think I put it on when I sent out the materials that this would be one of the issues. It was, I said. At our meeting, these in particular. So for the next time though, we need to, we, you know, unless we wanna just keep postponing this, it would be good if everybody is, uh, ready to.
Well, can we also have a cleaned up version of this? Cause what I'm looking at is. There's all sorts of comments on the side and straight clues.
Yes. There are very few comments on the side. Right?
This is not the way the handbook is gonna look, there's. All sorts of formatting comments on the side.
Part of that is because there are issues to be discussed. A cleaned up version, I would have to make assumptions on certain decisions, which I can't do. I have cleaned it up as best as I can, um. But I can send the council a new version?
There should be. There should be a markup version like this one, and then there should be a final version that's very readable. But what issues are there to discuss? Isn't it motion to approve or not approve?
Nobody's moving to it, nobody's proposing about it, discussion.
But. Um, I think I lost.
Okay, we're gonna defer, the, the, the motion is to defer, all, all in favor. Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, that's approved. What I will do is make sure you have enough copies of this in different form. So that we won't be asking questions as to what it says, um, or what's new. The, so that's responsibility of Jean and me, uh, on the, on the council side. Jean, as requested before, would like your comments, and Barbara did provide them, so I'm not talking to Barbara. Not talking to Barbara, did provide hers, everybody needs to provide theirs, if you don't provide it, we'll assume you don't have any. Um, because it's hard to.
There's no room left to provide comments, cause Barbara's got all the space, so it's like.
Okay, uh, yeah, so, so this is.
I, I have a, a, I have a point of order, John, I'm sorry. Um, I, I think that we may be getting hung up a little bit on motions to introduce or to take up the next item. I- if we're going to do something, someone just needs to make a motion, like. I move that we adopt the amended, uh, employee handbook. That, that, that we were just talking about, I'm not, I'm just using that as an example. If someone seconds it, then there's debate about it, and, and we can do various things. Um, so, but, but, um, I, I think that the. Uh, amendment to the zoning ordinance, I'm not sure that we did anything. Um, and, and if possible, it would be, I'd like to return in, to that very briefly to make a motion. That we adopt the timeline for action that, um, John proposed. Because I think we need to do those steps to make, uh, under the charter to make the amendment to the zoning. But I don't think that we actually took action to do any of the things that we need to, to get that process underway. We just sort of talked about it and then moved on.
Rob, Rob, can we finish the employee handbook and then go back to that?
Well, no, we, we've done the employee handbook, we postponed deliberation, this is just a point of order, I just wanna make sure that we're kind of doing things in an. In, in an orderly and efficient way, I don't, I, tha- tha- that's the only point, I don't, I, I'll, I, I'm, I'm done with my point of order comment, but.
Well, my comment about that is that, that, you know, having a council vote on a timeline is. Not appropriate. The prime line is, is, is shown because we are required to do those things. You can't vote against it, there's nothing to vote on. What you can do is you can vote, what, what, you know, once the public hearing is held. You can discuss and vote against the amendment. That, that's, uh, definitely a, a, an orderly way to go about it, but at this point, the council has no choice. But to proceed in this manner. If you don't want to just set the public hearing, that. Violates the required ac- actions. It's, it's not like, I mean, essentially, we, we voted on setting the public hearing.
So does that mean that?
We didn't take, there, there was no vote, was there? That, 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 that's my point of order, like, I, 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 I don't. I'm not sure I disagree with you, John, I'm just observing that, I don't think we actually did anything. I didn't hear a vote, I, I don't remember being asked to vote.
I think we adopted Robert's rules that is, uh, it's a subset. If the council by acclamation agrees that I say.
Agree, I asked for unanimous consent, that. I asked for, I think, I think the que- what you would do is, would be, uh, is there any objection, or I asked for unanimous consent? That we proceed with this timeline and have a public hearing on the zoning ordinance, and I think we always would have agreed. But we didn't do anything, I'm just ma- making that observation that. Or just to, to be orderly and efficient, let's, since we, we made a commitment to follow Robert's rules. And I agree with that, but we should, you know, do that, I don't need, not like kind of rigidly, but just. With some, you know, finality to the rules. I'll stop talking now, that's my point of order.
I have a question. Uh, about, are we done, are we done with the handbook? If I ask a question about the. Have we, have we endorsed, that, that, as approved, we've all looked at the ZTA. And we, we've discussed it, but have we, we haven't as a council endorsed this, right? We don't do that, so. So it really isn't, all we're doing is, like you say, that's we're just introducing it to the town. So they can look at it, and then we're gonna vote on, right? Okay, so, and, so, and the council itself, though, this was an opportunity for us, before we put it out there. To, to, to discuss, so the fact that there was no discussion, to me, says that everybody is okay with it.
But you do not have the option of discussing.
We don't.
No, planning commission did all the discussing.
Right.
And is proposing the ordinance, that's a, that's a particular process.
Right.
That is encoded in our, uh, in, in the requirements. And, and, once that happens, the town council must go through some steps. In the end, or at some point, they can vote it down.
Okay.
Okay, of course, uh, but first you have to go through a process. Um, you call for the, uh, for the ADU thing. Um, I requested from the George Ed in particular, you guys hold a public hearing. Because there was a lot of, a lot of information, so you guys have a public hearing. Which you use to tweak the ordinance, and then that was forward to the council, and we had a public hearing.
Okay, okay, no.
I mean, but all those things are process, nobody can vote it down. You know, once you guys started it, we can't do it until it goes through the public hearing process. At which point, it sits in the, then, then the council must act within ninety days or something like that.
That's good, thanks, I'm good.
Alright. Okay, well then, we've disposed of the handbook in total, that's the, the next, then November meeting. So the next item I threw on here is the, um. A guidance for town councillors in their role as, um, town liaisons and somewhere. I, I'm bringing this up, and I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, someone to introduce it. Um, as a, or so we can discuss it, and, um. As a, as a preamble, it is, um, I don't know what I'm sharing, I'm gonna be resharing this. This also arose out of the, uh, brouhaha, the kerfuffle, the, the, the serious, uh, issue. Of, um, a bridge being built in, in the, in, in the Westwoods without a review or. Review or approval from the town, and, um, in my discussions with Tom Ryan, um. A- a- as to what actually happened, um, uh, I pointed out to him that, you know. It was correct, going to the Woods Committee was the correct thing to do, to, to build, to do a bridge. But he was not happy with the way it was handled. If anybody's not happy with what a committee handles an issue, remember the committee's not official, it's not, I mean, it's not. It's not an arm of, of the town per se, they can skip the committee and come to the council. Alright, and, um, yeah, a council may say, take it to the Woods. You know, and maybe, it may be that, that. That, that unnecessary to do it, but if, 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 if you're unhappy with, uh, your idea, you want your ideas to come directly to the council. That is always a possibility, so, um, we thought that, hey. You know, we, 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 we can probably ensure that happens, that anybody who's unhappy, and a lot of other things you might be unhappy with at a committee. Level, that, how could we, uh, how could we ensure that, uh, that was dealt, and so the idea was that, wow. What exactly is the role of the council liaisons, because we have a council liaison. And, um, uh, maybe we, we should have some guidance for councillors in their role as council liaison. So that's what I put, he put together, and, and with me, um, I, I used his start, and. Um, and this is the, the document I would like, the, the council, so I'd like somebody to introduce this for consideration. As it says, guidance for town councillors in their role as committees.
Motion to introduce guidance to town councillors in their role?
Motion to approve.
No, it's a motion to introduce.
But.
This one's approved.
Motion to approve the guy, that's true, guidance to town councils in their role.
Alright, Chris seconded it. Okay, so, so you can read it here, um, I hope somebody did read it, very straightforward. Question is, does it hit all the, all, all the responsibilities that you all who have been doing these things for some time? First is obviously attend the meetings, secondly is to generate a summary report, that's your town council report. Uh, the third, here's the important one, uh, and one of the important ones is to notify the mayor and the council of plans. That would significantly affect town property, including installation of new features and alterations to existing facilities. So, you know, and this is when the life committee is talking about putting in a driving board. Or, or, uh, or, uh, or the, uh, daily committee is putting in some identity, any of those things. We, the council should know about it, and that, the, the liaison, uh, uh. Kind of has responsibility to be sure we know about it. If, if the com- committee isn't communicating as well.
Well, last one on that, so how, how would you like that to be communicated?
You can either brook, talk to us, talk and bring it up at a meeting, talk to me.
At a council meeting?
Yes.
That's.
You have town council report, if it's in your report, you've done it.
Oh, oh, okay, well.
Alright, of course.
Okay, alright.
If, but you may not, you know, something to happen in, in, in the interim, but I own those.
Alright.
It's just I'm being explicit. Advise the committee or commission of actions of cons- uh, or concerns of the town council, this is the. Communicate from the council to the committees. Um, minutes, ensure that the minutes are generated, so. You know, we, we, that's one of our guidance to committees, is that they have minutes, and that they be approved in a timely manner, monthly. Obviously, that, there's some slippage in that, but, you know, that's the goal. You know, encourage that the minutes are posted on the town's website. So that doesn't mean, you know, you have to do it, but you have to ask the chair, have you done it? And maybe check on the website, have the, have, you know, it's kind of monitor, basically, is what it says, monitor. Notify the mayor and town council of serious conflicts within the committee or commission that appear to be impeding the work of the group. That's pretty much. Means what it says. And lastly, ensure that any commissioner or committee member who seems unsatisfied with the actions of the group. Is aware they may directly approach the mayor and or town council with their proposals or concerns. So, just because, uh, in other words, just because a committee. Isn't interested, doesn't mean it has to end there. They're not happy with that, then they, they should come personally. And the liaison should be. Be sure they know they can do that. The liaison does not have to pick up the football and run with it. It's just a matter of guns to whoever.
May, may, go back to nine number three?
Sure.
Um, just, just to clarify, right? Example. Um, this past summer, when I was working with the forest person system, I did send out an email to all of us. Because it was, uh, it was an immediate need, like, to keep us apprised of what was going on and not able to wait. Until our next meeting, you're talking about those kinds of reports, is that right?
Two things about that, one is it was an emergency situation.
Sure.
So. This doesn't, uh, uh, emergency situations bypass. The required, the, the, the rules. Secondly, there is no McCatharine Hall committee, that was kind of your responsibility as to. You're not always on your, your responsibility as McCatharine Hall and any issues, so you were acting perfectly. Completely fulfilling your responsibility by telling us. It happens as it.
But had, had something like that happened i- i- in a, in a, a committee set, right? What I had done would probably also be, uh, of, of appropriate nature for other. Liaisons to do, right, identify, you know, if it catches on fire in a park or something, then, right?
Yeah.
I would like to, we had one just down the street here, so, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. It, uh, you know, you're raising, uh, an important point, never hurts to reiterate, in those guidelines for volunteering. For doing stuff around town. If a tree falls across the road, and somebody wants to go out and cut the tree. So that you people can go past. Guess what, they don't have to go through some process. You know, it'd be good to chat with the mayor, maybe, or say, look, I'm, maybe, maybe you can move. Or check with the councillor responsible for safety. Um, now, we, we, we need to open the street, so, and, and that's it, so it wouldn't be, you know, it's. So, emergency, you know, things that, you know, are unplanned and time sensitive. Are, are dealt with.
So. On, on that same number three. He said that a town council report. Is sufficient to notify town of plans in the committee that might affect town. So, since this predates my involvement with the Woods Committee. Has anybody gone back and looked if the bridge was mentioned in anybody?
In fact, it was.
So.
I, I want, you, you're welcome to go look, see that it was. Was mentioned, what can I show you?
I'll take exception to that. From the Woods Committee, and I don't wanna interrupt your meeting, there was, Tom came on in.
And I would take exception with Patty, break.
Be happy to explain, thank you.
Well, there's nothing to explain, all I'm saying is that the, the bridge issue came before the committee, it's in the minutes. And the bridge was never approved, there were some requests made that were never fulfilled. And that was the end of it, many thought. Until the bridge appeared.
No, my, my, my only question was, did, did it get into a town council report that actually came? Not, not in the minutes.
Don't know about that.
Okay, that was, that was, I, there was, it was about whether it was in the town council report, and the only, only reason I raise it. Is if, if a, a count, council report may not be at a level necessary. At a level necessary to really inform. The members of the town council, that something like this might be going on within discussion in the commit. Does, so does it raise a highness level of awareness, that's the only question.
Good question, and if you contact a town councillor and who is the maintenance supervisor. Is that sufficient?
Um, please. We're, 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 we're getting to, we're getting there. You know, anything, you know, you don't have to leave it in the, in the town council report, and you know, more media things should get direct. Direct statement to ensure that nobody's just skipped over it or.
Right.
All right, and basically what this says is that the, 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 the committee liaison should be. Um, should, should. Be, be. Undertaking the role, but anything that might become controversial, I'll just skip to the chase.
Sure.
Even if you don't see how it might be, but it could, you know, should be, be, the council should be made aware. The mayor and, and that's what Tom was gonna say, and now, with the. I don't think anybody's objecting to that, that was a clarification. I, I use castle reports as an example, a, a lot of things are reported and, you know, and we don't need to hear about the. You know, the, the next contemplated border, um, identity fence. We just need about hear about it when it's actually decided, when they're actually gonna do it. That's different. Yeah. All right. So, um, any, any discussion, if it's been moved through about this policy? I just want to get modified at any time if it appears to be deficient or excessive leaves. Sorry?
So I have one, one question and then a proposed amendment to add two additional points. The, I have a question about what we think. It means for a liaison to ensure that a committee do anything. We use the term ensure in point five and point eight. And in particular, point five, um, I mean, it. I think it's a little hard for, certainly a liaison can encourage, maybe even browbeat. Committee members or committee chairs to circulate. Minutes and do the other things that we think are good practices, kind of consistent with. Roberts rules, the Open Meeting Act and whatnot. Um, but we actually considered and I think enacted sort of a. I would say somewhat watered down resolution a few years ago, um. That, that, that really didn't have the, the council requiring the committees to do. Anything in particular in terms of governance, so. I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure that the verb ensure is what I would do, um, maybe in, in, encourage. Or something like that, um. Uh, and, and, and so I proposed. We're amending this, uh, in points five and, and eight. To substitute encourage for ensure. Um, and then I, the, that's the first part of the amendment, and then the second part of the amendment is. Um, I, I think that we should add something to the effect, um. Two, two provisions, um. One, encourage that committees give interested town residents. The opportunity to be heard and participate in the activities of the committee.
Well, Rob, you have a better word than ensure.
I, I encourage.
Well, my.
I mean, I, I just ensure sounds like we have the power, we, we need to take steps to like actually. Well, you know, ensure to, 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 to require it to, to happen. Um, I'm actually, I. I, 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 I think I suspect there may be committees who have from time to time not regularly generated minutes. And maybe they should, but, um, that, that's, I, I, I would say encourage, right, sure.
Well, your point is made, but I, look, it, it should be under screen. Ensure that if minutes are generated from meetings, that they are approved monthly in a timely manner. Is that okay?
No, but I think that's not the point I'm making, I'm, I'm objecting to the ensure. But not objecting, but just r- raising a concern, I mean, I'd, I'd like for us to, to ensure that these things happen. But, um, absent a. I, I think, absent a resolution that actually provides for town council control over the conduct of the committees. Which, um, is something that we considered many years ago and decided. Against, I would say, in, in large part. Yeah, I don't think that we can ensure that what we constantly say are, are sort of, you know. Volunteer citizen committees that play at most an advisory role. Um, and, and, and help, not at, at most, but it play at advisory and. Well, volunteer role. They're, they're not town arms, town organs, as, as you've said in the past. And then. So, so that, that's why I thought encourage rather than ensure, the, the original text was fine, just swapping out ensure for encourage, that was my. The First Amendment in point.
Okay, so you, you're, you're now proposing to such to encourage or ensure. I think that's a pretty straightforward thing.
And then the, the one I wanted to add was, um, proposed adding was encourage. The committees. To welcome interested town residents, uh. They're, encourage committees to give interested town residents the opportunity to be heard and to participate. In the activities of the committee. I think we all know, at various points in time, various people have had concerns or objections about various committees. Inclusiveness or receptivity to. People who are interested in the town to participate, to try and have a, you know, a voice in how. The committee is run, and so I think that that is an important part of. What liaisons should do is encourage such, encourage that committees for that kind of participation and voice. Is there a second to my proposed amendment?
Say it again.
Is there a, I, I just was asking if there's a second.
If you, if you're making, uh, just, so, yeah, say, say what you want to do again.
Yeah, adding point nine, I guess. Um, encourage that committees. Welcome interested, they give interested, um. Town residents the opportunity to be heard and to participate in the activities of the committee. Encourage committees to give interested town residents the opportunity. To be heard and to participate in the activities of the committee. The opportunity to be heard.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
What?
I'm not sure what you're saying there.
Encourage committees to give interested residents the opportunity to be heard and to participate in the activities. Of the committee. Is that?
No.
Play that as clear, what?
So, wait a minute, we're, we've got a couple of things going on, we've got something going on in section five, and now we have a new section here. So what is the motion exactly?
To make the two highlighted amendments, that's, that's my admission.
You're second to these two amendments?
Peter was clarifying.
I thought you were objecting.
No, 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 I'm not objecting, but.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't, I'm just trying to, that's a very. Now, Rob, Rob knows, right, in his mind, he's saying, but like, I'm looking at it and I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what he's saying.
So we need a second before we can discuss them.
Rob, is, have I got it correct, encourage, encourage committees to give interested residents the opportunity to be heard. And participate in the activities of the committee.
So these are people who are already on the committee, these are people who, these are just residents? Or are these committee members we're talking about?
We don't have a second yet.
Oh.
Anybody gonna second this amendment? Apparently not.
Okay.
Okay, and it is not, uh, so I'm just gonna strike it, I'll leave it here. How about the encourage, he also proposed.
That was part of the amendment, right, there's three pieces, and there was no second.
Okay.
Yeah, so, fine, going back to the original text.
No, can we, but, oh, do we have to, so, I think that we're interested in five though, so can we now? So how do we get back to five to approve it or talk about it?
That's what we're talking about, it was part of the saying.
Right.
So you're amend. And, all right, do I hear an amendment proposed to item five? Rob.
Yes, I will propose. Amending just item five in. Now, to substitute or encourage for ensure.
And I'll second that.
All right, there's your second.
It's the opposite of the edit that you're showing. There you go.
I'm, I'm just trying to fix. Okay, it's removed and seconded, any discussion on amending, uh, uh, item five?
I, I think it's, um, meaningless to say encourage that minutes are generated in the meeting. And I don't think it's the responsibility of the liaison to get the minutes generated, that's the. Responsibility of the chair of the committee. Um, I don't even think this needs to be here, number five.
How about posting? Okay, sure.
Well, I, I agree, Barbara, that I, and that's the reason for the amendment. I don't think it is the responsibility of the liaison to ensure that the committee does, um, anything. Um, whi- which is why I also have proposed that same change to replace encourage with ensure.
I believe Barbara was not in favor of encourage either.
Okay, I. This is all probably a waste of time, so I.
I mean, you could say.
Honestly, like, the point nine is the important one, because it's what people care about in this town, because the, the frustration, Tom's frustration is. I'm trying to capture point nine, and it's fortitory, right, and it's not. You know, giving, but it's just expressing a principle that I think a lot of people feel. Like often left out about various committees.
But I don't think, I, I hear you, like.
Whatever, like, you guys didn't, no one wanted to do that amendment, I, I, that, so, that's fine.
The way you have it worth it, doesn't. You know the whole history of what you're talking about, but just looking at that doesn't do it. I mean, I, I, I think it needs to be worth it differently, that's all, because I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, well, sure, now is not the time, maybe at a subsequent meeting, we'll, we'll reconsider in light of recent events. Whether.
Yeah.
And what we, uh, and how we require committees to connect themselves.
Right, I think council should, I agree with you, I think that's something we need to discuss.
So is the job liaison to kind of police the behavior of committees? Um, I mean, that's what, a lot of this feels like that, that, you know, we're kind of going in and spying out the land.
No.
You know, getting back to the chief, huh, those things aren't going well.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the role of the town council liaison? I mean, I, I've been trying to figure this out since day one.
I mean, that.
Okay. Also except for these uses of in, in, of, of ensure. We can change that word, but all of the rest, what, what I put on there was supposed to be. Communication related, liaison communication, both ways.
Communication.
To the committee and from the committee.
Right.
Okay, so, you can, we can, we, however, that role can. Include specific things to be communicated, this is what you, you were confused about, what should I do? So, I'm trying to include those here, so the first says notify the mayor. The, um, second is notify the committee, it's in the vice committee of actions. The minutes we could be, um, you know, uh, uh, notify the council. Whether minutes are generated from meetings and approved, that, that's just a communications thing. All right, so the problem is that, you know, as mayor, I could probably coerce. All the committees into getting their minutes onto the web. But I can't do that unless I know.
That's there, but they're not there.
They're not there, and I frankly, you know, don't want to make it a monthly task or whatever, or a weekly task. To check if it's there, that was kind of saying, okay, many liaison has to know what's going on.
Sure.
They can at least report back whether minutes, so maybe it's monitor whether minutes are generated and.
That, that's a good one.
Approved and whether they are being posted.
I think if, if the whole concept is communication.
Okay, so, that's a point well taken, so ensure is, you know, was, was, um, all base. Uh, similarly, the ensure down here is probably not the right word, uh.
Monitor this.
Yes, well, I want to be, this is more active, see, I, the insurer may be okay here. Because we are talking about, about the liaison and a resident. For a member, we're not talking about telling anybody about how the committee should work, we're talking about, hey, if you're not happy. You have the option of going to the council.
Sure.
I don't get it, if, if you're a council member, right, and you're aware of this already.
The council member, you don't want a council member picking the ball up from somebody who's unhappy and, and. And making, why should they make it their issue? It's.
They can bring it, bring it, they can, but they can, first of all, they're the liaison, they should, they should be able to handle it, they're on the council. And if not, they will.
I guess, they couldn't, but they don't have to, but the person who's unhappy, they can.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, why should they, the liaison step, you know, I mean, an individual can do it themselves.
To me, to me, this is, this is just, like you say, communicate, just as communicating, as comments, exact, exactly. But if you want to put it in writing, I have no problem with it.
Okay. May I be recognized for a second, John, I just have a comment on number eight. That's all, is that all the committees were asked to. Their guidelines, and every committee has.
Our point, point of order, this is.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify from the committee perspective, we have a process in place.
Point of order, I'm sorry, this is not a public hearing now.
That's why this is called guidelines, it's not. It's not requirements, it's guidelines. So, um. Yeah, so I, 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 I think in eight you can have ensure without my, my.
Well, could you say tell, and commission or committee member who seems unsatisfied with the.
Remind.
The group.
And you want to tell.
They may directly.
Tell.
That's a good.
That's an active.
That's fine.
Okay.
Tell.
Tell any commission or committee member.
All right, I'm just gonna take that out.
That you need to see something is aware and they're, you need to take that out.
All right, that's a good. All right, so, um, who is proposing these amendments? Rob, are you good with the number six? Eight, number eight? We lost Rob.
No, I'm sure, I'm reading it. Sure. Yes.
Okay, so part of the amendment, proposed amendment then is alteration to five, which says monitor whether, and number eight to tell. And appropriate grammar, so. Any other discussion? All favor of making that change? Okay, five, so, any further discussion?
No, I have one comment, John, which I know you're gonna hate, but. If the couns-, if the committees are doing this, the council should also, about minutes. The council, I would really appreciate getting the minutes, uh, on the web faster.
They are, uh, on the web as soon as they are approved.
Right.
Christine puts them up.
We, we go like months sometimes before they're done.
Just once in a while when we have three meetings in a month.
Yeah.
That's when it happens.
I, I know there, I, I'm just saying, I like.
You can always ask me for, for the, uh, uh.
Yeah.
This is a comment, and, you know, I, I.
I appreciate, yeah.
I haven't been sending them around. We, we get the A I generated summaries of this meeting. Okay, which is not perfect, but it captures largely what goes on. So anybody who wants that. Prior and Christine has. I don't think, she may or may not, I don't remember if she's making those available. Big caveat, A I generated, and that usually needs to be checked. But yeah, that's available as, you know, in our morning. So, you know, if you really feel like, uh, we, we've talked about posting. Draft minutes, nobody was in favor, nobody's ever, ever agreed to do that. We can't approve the minutes any sooner than the following month, so the earliest you can get the minutes. To September, September is tomorrow.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you're right.
No, when I, when I, when at the H P C meeting, when, uh, H P C, when they, at the P C meeting, when I'm talking about. What happened at the council meeting, I can't remember, but in three weeks, and like, so I go back to the agenda. And look at that and go, but it would be nice, so I always go to the website to see if there's anything on there and.
If you ask me, what I do after every meeting.
Yeah.
Is I take the agenda and I put my notes on it as to what. Just briefly, what happened.
Right.
With each of those items.
Let's, so I should invite you to the P C meetings? Thank you.
You can invite me to share my, my notes.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah.
That, that, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Or God forbid, you could do the same thing.
Yeah, no.
All right.
Am I allowed? The, the minutes are getting really long again and they shouldn't be. We, I, I should be able to. And it's not, it's not on my verbs, they're not on all my verbiage, it's just that, maybe because we have so many things going on right now, that's why. But they are getting wrong.
The, the problem. It, so, basically it stripped the, I mean, any, any expansion on discussion or anything like that. But to understand the agenda item. You know, you, you, you either just list the item and say, sections of the council, boom. Or you have to, or I think you need to explain what the agenda item was about. So you at least need to give the. The, the, what, what, what it's addressing, not necessarily commenting on. So that's why it got longer with some of our recent things. You'll see, if you look at it again, for the, for the sign, for the radar signs, it was very short. For the bridge thing, nobody could understand the bridge. Discuss, uh, the, uh, actions, if you don't understand what it was about, so where do you find that?
Are, are we using the A I summary feature in Zoom? Cause I mean, we're recording this. I was gonna say, uh, uh, given the availability of. A I tools, I'd think that the meeting minutes could be longer and. More detailed than they were in the past, just because it's. Easier to create a more detailed summary using it. If we're not using it, we should be.
I, I, I put on some, I probably haven't elected to put it on, but I was putting on the minutes and we were approving it. That, uh, you, you consult the, um. Either the A I generated summary or video record, the recordings of the meeting.
Well, sure, yeah, but, yeah, those are too long, you know.
No, it, it's just, it's not part of the minutes, it's a reminder that those are available.
Yeah, I, I asked a different question. I, I, if Kathy, you are using or consulting the A I generated summary to aid in prepar- preparing the minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Great.
But the A I doesn't capture.
Oh, I, I know, it's, it's imperfect, I'm not saying it's a full substitute.
Actually, the action items really well, but not so much the, the discussion. The, not the discussion, but the gist of the. Of, 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 of agenda. Tell you what, I'll, I can send you the A I, uh, summary, um. If I, uh, excuse me, I don't forget to. The Zoom, Zoom has gotten kind of sophisticated about that. The A I summaries can be in different formats. So this, the general format. Is, has sort of a, 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 a list of action items that were, you know, and then a block. Uh, for each, um, each, uh, topic, it has identified a block of what, what happened. Another format is a one-on-one format, which is more a bullet pointed thing, it's really quite. It's, it, in a way, it's more useful, um, and closer to what you really want in the minutes. It's, it's less, it doesn't elaborate. I can send, and I've been doing both of those. And I have those for many meetings, if you want to see them, I can attach those to the minutes, not that we would be approving them, but. It will provide you with the, with the expanded, uh. With the expanded, uh, opportunity to remember, to recall what it was for. Okay, so we, we approve the, the, did we approve this, the guidance for town council, which is another all this committee liaison? Uh, okay. Slowly truly. All right, we have finally arrived at the playground comprehensive plan. Just as, uh, as background. What we received was from the playground work group was a comprehensive document. And, and, um, we are now, uh, at the point where, um. If, if any councillor wants to, um. Hold a discussion under a motion, the motion would be to, um, approve a, that document. Ultimately, we could have a motion that approves. Um, creation of such a document. But whichever way you want to go.
So will I just give an update from my perspective or do I have to make a motion?
We need a motion for you to discuss this.
Okay, I'm making a motion to discuss it.
Can't make a motion to discuss.
Discuss what?
To discuss.
You need to make a motion to approve it.
Is it, is this before it's be approved?
I don't think it's.
Isn't it? If there's a motion.
I don't.
Isn't it the whole point?
I'll spare it, yeah.
Start again?
Uh, I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's right.
We don't have to vote tonight.
Right.
But if we want to discuss it, we need.
I'm interested to, for, uh, well, I'm just, for, yeah, okay.
Before I beat the motion.
Yeah.
The alternative is to make a motion and. Approve and vote in favor of creating a playground comprehensive plan. And then we can discuss what the heck you mean by a playground comprehensive plan and the council can. Provide its thoughts on what that should be. And then you wouldn't have introduced this particular document. Although we can do it that way too. Which I already, I know that's a little more complicated, but it, it, it doesn't involve.
I thought we already did that, we haven't done that?
Yeah, no.
I'm over.
We just got this document a week ago.
All right, motion, I'll, so I'll make a motion to discuss creation, uh, am I saying this right? Motion to discuss creation of. A comprehensive playground.
Move to create.
Not motion to discuss. We make a motion to do something and then we discuss it.
Right, okay.
Second it.
Correct.
A playground comprehensive plan. So is there a second?
I second it.
Have a draft comprehensive plan.
No, no.
But anyway.
We do if you move to.
This, so this, okay, well, Rob seconded my motion.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, so we're having discussion about it.
Thank you, so now we can discuss a playground comprehensive plan. Peter?
So, so I was, I sat at this table. And with, with, uh, Steve was here, uh, F and B was here and the, uh, playground group was here. And at that stage, we were, uh, one of the challenges was. Um, so we got to see a general outline of what was being planned and, uh, there was agreement. Uh, with F and B, we all agreed on, uh, how a pathway would go through, which would affect. Who we found with the plan, my understanding, and I could be. You know, my understanding was that, that it's, we're off, it's not ready, um, to come to, you know, it's not ready for us to.
What, what are you saying? What are you saying?
I was saying that we, we, in my experience, this is my experience with, with the playground group, was that. We, we hammered out some preliminary things with F and B, which was kind of holding things up. And, but, it's not, I don't think it's ready for us, so we're not gonna vote on it at this stage. Is that, is that correct?
What?
Well, I don't know if, if you have, John, you had on the, on the agenda. You had, um, other people on there besides me. I thought that somebody was gonna speak for the playground group at this point.
Well, only if there's a motion for them to speak too.
Yeah, I don't even know if.
What, what are we?
I provided, I provided the playground group with a few. Well, I provided them with what I thought would happen tonight, which is exactly what's happening.
Yeah.
And then I provided a few, by no means comprehensive, but a few comments of my own. Um, and Oscar is aware of this. The first one is that the document we were provided with. Isn't couched in the same for, in a format like our towns comprehensive plan. It doesn't actually list recommendations.
Right.
It has a vision and the visions are great and I wasn't kidding about that. So, um, but after giving a vision for a particular zone or, or even a whole thing. It doesn't actually recommend as a comprehensive plan ought to is, you know. This is what the town is going, is looking, is looking to do.
Right.
So, uh, uh, my recommendation there was that it be changed to do that. The second thing it doesn't do is it, you're, you're constantly referring to the playground work groups. Thoughts. This is a town's comprehensive plan, it's gotta be the town's thoughts. So all reference to the playground work room, except in so much as they put so much effort into it, they helped prepare it. Shouldn't be part of it, it needs to say the town, um. You know, aims to, uh, uh, increase the, uh, opportunity for, um, kids five to. Twelve opportunity, yeah, that, that's, the town needs to be.
I don't understand why it's on the agenda, I guess is what I would say. Because they were, yeah.
It has, they need some guidance, or somebody has to, in my opinion, needs to reformat this. One, point one, you were addressing they need to come to some. They need resolve controversy between land use, I think that's what you were talking.
No, I, I don't think, it, it's on the agenda though, I don't, I don't understand why it's on the agenda unless we're gonna empower the. Why is it on the agenda?
I think the council wanted to say something about this, uh, this proposal.
Did the, did the playground group request that the only agenda?
Can I speak to that for a second?
Yes.
But I like the motion for you to be allowed to speak to.
Thank you. So, um, we have worked a couple more months on this plan, uh, after presenting the PowerPoint presentation. And we feel like it's at a point where we want to have that substantive discussion. I, I feel like, uh, the paperwork that you have in front of you, um, or, or wherever it may be, uh, that we sent out last week. Uh, we would like to have. Public comment, which I know it's out there in the ether now, I know John, uh, Mayor Compton sent that out. Uh, for public discussion, we'd also like the council's comments as well. Uh, we want to basically just continue getting momentum on the document, so. We're at a point where we feel like we've marked it up and it's at a stage where we're. Happy with, so, and, and we did get some of John Mayor Compton's, uh, comments, so. We'll address those, but one of our questions, one of my questions would be. How, you know, uh, we do want to address those points, uh. So John, like, we want to change the verbiage to say the town recommends instead of the playground. Work group recommends, that's something that we're obviously amenable to, but. We also would like some guidance on, would that be acceptable to the entire council? We want the, the council to ultimately approve this document, so, uh, what. We would be hesitant towards doing is changing something in a draft format and then coming back next month. And the council says, well, we kind, kind of disagree, so we wanted to see if there's any sort of agreement. To change for whatever we can do, uh, in, in the next month.
So, uh, I think that's a process question and I think if the committee. Likes the comments that it received, the, the committee can incorporate whatever comments it receives. And I, I know I said some of this afternoon, it was late in the day, but. Then you incorporate them and then it comes to the council with those comments in, with those changes in there. And then if people don't like them, then they can amend to have them taken out, but if they, if they're there. If, if the committee thinks, the, the playground group thinks that they, they're worthwhile and they should be there. Then put them in and then let us decide then, you know what I mean? We, we don't want to be discussing every single comment that comes along and get voted up or down.
It, so, may I be heard?
I'll, I'll, it's, it's here and he wants to contribute something.
Yes, I might, wanna echo what, what Jonathan said, we'll, we'll, we'll make first changes about. Um, the town versus the playground committee, you know, recommending things, um, as well, you know, recommendations versus visions. I think my question is, whether it's a recommendation or a vision, you have a sense of the various changes that we'd like to implement around the playground. And I think like to get, like, your initial sense of, do you see red flags or are you amenable to, to the recommendations or the visions that we're communicating here? At least the town residents can hear where, where you stand right now, so they can inform, kind of comment state make over the next month, so. While we work on the verbiage changes that they're asking for.
No, I'll say, I, having looked at it and listened to you guys after the meeting. You know, I, I like, I like where you're going with it, I think that, the, I know the most difficult thing is the pricing. As far as money, and I know it's difficult to come up with that, that's gonna be your question and everybody's gonna be asking. But as far as the vision of what you have, I think it's really exciting. And, um, it'll totally transform, uh, it's already a great place, but this is gonna take it into the future.
So.
Yeah, may I be heard?
I, I, um. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chris, go ahead, Chris.
I, I, I know he's interested in. I, I, I know he's interested in, in stating some of his thoughts. But Jonathan Dale, you're, you're, you're done?
Uh, yeah, well, and just one more comment to your earlier, um, point, John was, uh, a, a lot of what we proposed is more of a comprehensive nature in the sense that, um, we're offering a, like a multi-year plan where not every decision has been made. Um, and, and so it's hard to offer recommendations. I know you said, you know, change things to offer a recommendations page or whatever it may be. Um, we don't have solid recommendations for every single piece and every single zone at this stage because uh, a lot of it, our decisions may come into effect in the next couple of years, right? So maybe year two and year three, we make additional decisions about specific pieces, but we are acting on the comprehensive plan in, in this total vision. So, uh, uh, it's, this is bigger picture and then we get more into the weeds as we go into, um, decision making in the next year or two.
Well, that corresponds with really my one really substantive thought, maybe. I know Chris said a few hundred, hundred stop. It's the last one I'm gonna do. And that is, um, comprehensive plan, you're, you're right. It's, it's probably inappropriate, except in cases where you really feel strongly to make a specific recommendation. But you can put a recommendation in, in the kind of recommendations I imagine being made are, um, that, uh, that pieces, uh, um, that strong consideration be given to playground pieces that, that, uh, represent, um, the Washington Grove's character and history, such as, that's merely a suggestion, the train pieces. I mean, that's a perfectly, but it, it, it means you're not actually, you know, putting into the plan by the, you know, putting the train pieces, but put in something along those lines. The same thing with the circle of, of houses. You know, I can, personally, I think it's a great idea, but to actually embed that in the plan, you could do that, but you're, you know, if it's not controversial. But you open yourself up to being overly specific, where what you really want is a, a, the playground to have this sort of character and these sorts of pieces. The big climbing thing that I think is your first priority, you can state that, you know, that's a priority, priority recommends one of these. That's what I mean by recommendations. You, you, you don't wanna be too, I agree, you don't wanna be too, too specific, but you want to, it needs to be guidance as to what how a decision will be made. Um, and, and I think that's all in the vision. It's just not, it's not couched as here is what should be done specifically. You know, the vision always supports the recommendations, um, recommendation change. Anyway, that's just my feeling. I think the comprehensive, our comprehensive plan follows that that format. There are recommendations and sometimes there's more or a lot of background, vision, et cetera. And then it ends up with three or five or whatever recommendation for the coming ten years.
I, I felt like this, this document, um, Chris.
No, I'll be go.
Chris was in line then.
Yeah, no, Chris, go first, please, please.
So, so, I mean, you know, it, it's, it's in the agenda that, that that I like to make a proposal, any substantive proposal, uh, and motion, I guess, that any substantive, uh, discussions be uh, postponed until uh, we provide ample time for our residents also to look at this document that came out last week and provide us some comments. And, and, uh, you know, that also has to go with the division thing, right? And it, we're council members, there's only six of us here, um, on council, but then we need to gather, um, input from our residents, I think also, you know, this, this is a, 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 a very comprehensive and strategic, uh, plan. So you know, that's, that was to that emotion, my emotion. That makes sense. I'm just, I'm just.
Didn't we make a motion before?
Oh, yeah.
That was so confusing.
Yeah, no, he, he, there, there was a motion to postpone consideration of. Adopting a comprehensive playground plan.
We are going to adopt.
Almost, uh, uh, all in favor?
Wait, in favor of what?
Of your motion. Playground Comprehensive Plan, all in favor?
Yeah.
That's what John, I should say yes.
Oh, yeah, I, I, yeah, but I, I thought.
Alright, now, that one's been approved. Chris, I think in separate motion. Now, regarding the proposal from the Playground Workgroup. Okay, now. So Chris, the, uh, I believe moved to defer substantive discussion of the Playground Workgroup's written document proposal to allow town resident input. So it will be deferred and we'll put it again on the agenda on November seventeenth.
Okay, so, uh, question. So, can we, um, so we, we're talking about getting town input.
Wait, did that go a second?
Yeah, yes. Got, yeah, that's, yeah, so, so. Yeah, so, I, I think that it would be helpful for the Playground Committee if we could have helped them as far as how do we solicit the EDEC to the town in a timely manner so that we can act upon this at the next meeting. Because are we gonna ask them to somehow do that or should the council help them? You know?
I'll speak for the Playground Workgroup. They provided a, a, um, um, document, access to a document where they hoped to get input provided to them at any time so that they could consider it and respond. So they have a, uh, Excel, uh, spreadsheet where you can go in tonight, you know, maybe if you're with beer or served but you know.
Yeah, yeah, in a way.
Just what you're saying.
Right. But I, so, so with what we're learning tonight, I think that would be very helpful if we all revisit that, that plan and give our feedback and to help them before it's sent out. So it's like you said, it's formatted maybe a little differently. Um, just to give them some guidance on that also.
That, that.
Look, in that vein, may I just be heard on the process?
Chris was talking first.
Real quick, real quick, no. It's just going to kind of delay it even further, right? If we provide guidance on reformatting the document, it's already out there. We've already seen a, a, a link to the document and also a comment spreadsheet.
I think Peter was saying that would be one of the recommendations. Other people could be respond to the size of the, the layout and the other stuff in the same time.
Yes.
So it wouldn't be one, it's not sequential.
But you're concerned that, sorry, that they'll lay, we're gonna delay.
Well, it's sequential. If we're trying to.
Yeah, well, it's sequential.
Okay.
I don't think he was saying it would be.
But now, can we all parallel with it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
This is gonna be ongoing for years.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, but, but we should get more engaged with it, I guess, as well out here tonight too.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Now Rob can speak.
Yeah, sure. Um, I, uh, don't mean to sound so, uh, I don't know if contrarian is the right word. Um, I'm not feeling well tonight. That's probably why. If I come across as a little cranky, my apologies to everyone. Um, I don't agree with a, a, a number of things that were said as suggestions to the Playground Group. I personally would find it most helpful if you, um, made clear and specific what your final recommendations are. Um, I, and so what I would propose is that, um, the, you in, in incorporate or not incorporate, address the, the comments that you receive from council and interested town people and then reissue, uh, th- this was your preliminary work plan. Um, I'd, I'd issue the final, this is what we would do as the, the work group. If we were the town council making the decisions on what to do with the playground and make the purchases and install the equipment, this is what we would do. That to me would be the most helpful. And so I, I disagree with suggestions on any, anything that would make it less specific. Um, I do agree with John's point. If, if, and it sounds like this is what you were saying, Oscar and Jonathan, that you, you use the term vision. If you actually mean recommendation, meaning, again, if you were like the mayor and the council, this is what we would buy and install for the playground. That's what I want. I personally, Rob Gilmore want from you. I think that would be most helpful for me because you've done enormous amount of work to your great credit. Thank you on behalf of the whole town. Um, there's no way that I'm gonna be well-informed enough, um, to, uh, uh, equal, you know, what you have studied here. So we are relying on, um, the work. It doesn't mean we're gonna agree. We may ultimately make changes, but um, I think that, starting from, if you were king for a day, this is what the playground would look like according to you guys. That's what I would like. And so, um, as you update the plan to address the comments and feedback that you've heard thus far and hopefully receive over the, the next coming weeks in advance of next town council meeting. Um, I would revise the plan to make it final, to specify exactly what your recommendations are. A- and you can, Jonathan, I think you can make clear, some of them may be over time, that you have immediate recommendations that are concrete and specific action items. And then in the future, maybe there are, um, a little bit more of a, a vision. I, I get that, but, but, you know, I, I would, I mean, a- all the equipment and the prices and whatnot, if this is, if that, that's what you guys think we should do, then just say that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that statement. I, I, I love the vision aspect of this, but there's, I feel like there needs to be some, just because things might change in the future and that might be the case, there's no reason to not to make recommendations now because you're asking the town to approve spending a lot of money on something. And if we wanna have a comprehensive plan, that plan includes a plan.
It doesn't, it doesn't include spending at all. This has absolutely nothing to do with spending.
Nothing?
No.
That's not at all right, John. How can you say that? What? Why would you say this has nothing to do with spending? It has everything to do with spending. We want them to recommend to the town what we should spend to buy new playground equipment. What are we talking about here? I, I'm sorry, I am, I'm sorry.
You're, you're disagreeing, we're disagreeing. Okay?
I, you're, you're right, we are disagreeing. Good Lord, what is going on tonight?
Let me explain why it's not about the spending, alright? I mean, we may, you know, whether the, the, you know, that next year turns out that we have to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a new sprinkler system. I say, well, I'm sorry, we, we don't feel like spending any money on the playground. Okay, so tha- those are annual decisions. I'm not saying that would happen, but it's, it's literally a per-budget decision. You know, and we have, we have a capital spending, uh, plan, which we sometimes follow and sometimes we, we, we feel that we don't follow it. So but what this is about, i- it's, it's about what sort of playground does the town want to have? And for that, the, the, all the work the Playground Workgroup has been doing is, uh, is critical. I mean, they are creating uh, something that the council can approve that the town would be approving. Here's the playground we want. And yeah, these particular pieces of equipment meet that, what we want. But we, they can't tell us that that's the one to buy, uh, because they, we can't prove buying it right away. They can recommend absolutely that this is the sort of thing to do. There's a huge difference. That's all.
Can I add to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the, the context for, for this and I, and, and, uh, Mayor, I, I agree with you. The context for this was the difficulty in the, in the conversation last year about the Metal Jungle Gym and, and the decision to remove it without context of what's gonna go in its place. And so the reason I, I, I see why, why, why you're asking for recommendations and I'm gonna incorporate that. Uh, but the reason why we had gone with vision was because the assumption was you're proving a plan so that in the future, when people wanna make changes to the park, we don't have a conversation about how it's gonna fit into the, or has it gonna fit into, into overall view? This is the overall view. This is the overall vision. So if you approve it in the future, when you say we wanna move, um, the small slide puts it in its place, you already understand what the context for that future purchase is. And that would be dependent on fiscal year availability of funds. Um, and that's why we, we didn't say we're gonna buy this right away this year and the next year and the next year. We gave you options, the different kinds of equipment that depending on the finances in the future, that would fit within that vision of, of that zone. So what you're proving isn't the spending right now. You're proving what the, the plan for every future request would be subject to these, these town discussions, but we would avoid the, the, that, that difficult conversation over, you know, you're moving this one little piece here and what has, has it fit into the bigger hole? We're giving you the bigger hole now to inform those conversations later.
And that, that's what I liked about the plan. I mean, that, that it, it produces the framework to handle those sorts of, um, you know, you know, potentially controversial decisions. They have a context for solving, for, for solving and, um, you know, I, I'm not, I, I think we're kind of talking across purposes. Uh, Rob wants specific, you know, ideas of what it will cost. Well, of course, if you point to, you know, if you give examples of the kind of piece of equipment, it has a today cost. You know, if you don't buy for three years, it will be a three years from now cost, but whatever, it gives you the idea. Um, um, so you know, it's not that I, I, I don't want that in the plan, in, in, in the thing. It's that I think the real power of the idea is the way Oscar just summarized it very well. Um, and I, I don't, it, it's not quite clear from the just the format that that's what it's all about. That's all. Um, and, and so we have a, a, a motion to, um, to, um, basically defer consideration of this document as, as the comprehensive plan, um, to allow input. It's available for comment from us as well as residents and in, uh, uh, at the November meeting, it will no doubt be revised and that may be the one that somebody wants to introduce for approval and then we can get down to rest there.
So, so, uh, to add to that, I guess, a thought just came in my mind is, you know, because of this form group, right, reaching out to the residents because it is a town, uh, uh, investment to get their input. And it may, you know, comments may come in, uh, strategic comments, but also vision comments, right? We don't know how the town feels. And so that's why when I, when I, you know, ask, is this in parallel or not, not sequential, that it's in parallel? We're all town residents and we're gonna provide appropriate, what we think is appropriate comments to this plan, which is a town plan.
And I think we have to remember too that we spent three years doing the comprehensive plan and we had over eighty rovers involved in the sections. It's not, and that's a challenge for these guys is that, you know, it's one thing if, you know, you want the dollar pricing, right? Okay, that's easy if you just put a piece of equipment in. But if you're talking about something that they're gonna, they're gonna be working on this for the next five years probably too. And so I don't think, we're not gonna get, like, we, we can't expect them to have a complete comprehensive plan turned in. It's gonna be, they look at it in phases or something like that.
So, so when you say a, a, a dollar plan, right, in my mind, I'm looking, you know, you may not know the dollar amount, that's what we're saying.
Right, we won't know.
Right. But how you approach, you know, and your selection criteria of whatever it is that you wanna do, you know, if I, if I wanna move this table, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna take some resources. People are gonna have to get up and move, you know, the table. And then if I move it, where's it gonna go? You know, that's, that's a, you know, a strategic thing. We don't need to have that, five people around the table defined or whatever, right? It, it, and, and that's what I'm getting at is if, if we wanna put a piece of equipment someplace. And, and that's what I'm getting at is if, if we want to put a piece of equipment someplace, and that's what, that's what Oscar was saying. You know, initially we were, we voted to take out a piece of equipment and all of a sudden like, not one. You know, and, and then so, you know, how are we selecting the equipment that we're moving or buying or whatever? That, that should be defined in as part of this plan, I think.
Well, I think we, right, but we all have opinions. Here's our opportunity before the next meeting, council meeting, to share them, look what's going on and shape it. And, you know, let's just, let's, we can talk all night without getting into it right here. Yeah.
I just want to be sure everyone knows. This comprehensive plan deals with. Two acres of town. The town's comprehensive plan dealt with two hundred and twenty-five acres.
What's your point?
My point is it can be done uh, uh, in less than three years.
Oh, I know, like, yeah, I know. I just, I give these guys, I write all the work they're doing.
No, no, I think, I think they've done, they're really pretty much there. It's, you know, except. They don't know the full reaction of residents and that's what they're appealing to. You know, before we do anything else, while we're doing these other things, you know. They'll, they'll want to wait another two months and find out somebody is just, you know, is, is their group is totally opposed to changing anything.
Right, right.
But they do. Um. So I think they provided a way to, to, to give them input on this spreadsheet, which is, was in all of the, so far, the. Lesser stuff, my bulletin, the whole bit. Um, but they can always send an email. I mean, you know, there's, there's a million ways uh, to, to do this. And I think that's what we're all saying and. Is there any more discussion on the moving forward than, um. You know, we're trying to get the, the, uh, uh, to, to get a document that. Somebody will feel good about introducing and we can then really work on the substantive parts of the document. At, at proposal.
I read the book.
All, all three are all three are motion then. Four here, Rob? He's back. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, that was a good discussion, guys. I, I hope it's helpful. You know, it does seem like sometimes. You're getting, I know you guys know. Somehow something about the way the town works. And we're going to move on to the Meadow Plan, which, you know, is, is, it gives you another example. Of the kind of controversies that have been jiggered. To, to reach consensus.
I appreciate all the comments. That would be very helpful. Yeah.
That was a pretty tough one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the council hall feels, you guys are really.
Great job. Well, thanks.
Okay. Then the next item is the Meadow Restoration Plan, uh, Phase Two. I mean, you have two presentations. Make sure. Everybody has the facts about this uh, next phase. I have, however. Uh, been asked to uh, make a few, um. Explanations regarding the town's role in this Meadow Restoration. Be sure everybody understands. At present, the, the county has responsibility for the use.
Yeah.
And maintenance of the twelve acres we are calling the Meadow. The town has no legal role or process. Official role in that. On paper. That said. Everybody is very aware, including the Parks Department, that the reason this acreage was available as a park. Is because of the town's efforts to keep development off of it. And of the arguments that we presented that were successful at getting the owner developer to. Uh, deed over the, an easement on this property. Um, and those arguments are, and your gentle mention of specifically, I'm not going to talk about them in my preamble. Um. What was I going to say? Uh, where, where I was going with that? Um. Right, so uh, the fact is that the Parks Department is aware of our wall limits and that. It's very near and dear to the town's heart. So they have been bending over backwards to. Uh, work with the town so that it meets. And come to some agreement as to how this property should be managed. And um, that has what has been happening ever since the actual easement was conveyed. There was the, well, I'm not going to go into all of that, Georgette and Bruce addressed that. So with that said, Georgette. Um, I think was intended to go first. Um, I'm going to, um. Find, I don't know, and has her, uh. Her presentation and um. I think we can do it from PDFs. Georgette, you are here and ready to roll?
Yes.
Okay, so here we are.
Okay. Um. And particularly considering the relative lateness of the hour, I will endeavor to be brief. I would say that of the six town council members, five of you have. Substantially heard this presentation before because I presented it. Um, much the same thing last year. Uh, so John, next slide.
Yeah, now I have to figure out how to get this.
Ah, great, okay. Okay, so. This is what the. Field or the Meadow looked like around two thousand one, two thousand two. Uh, actually when um, Ernie and I first moved here. And this is the main, this is the main photograph that was used. In presentations to the Legacy Open Space Program members. And to the, and later to the um. Uh, uh, Planning Board. Um. Basically. The main point that was made was that this was the last vestige of the. Agricultural rural heritage of the town of Washington Grove. And that disturbing it uh, would basically be detrimental to the historic town. So, um. When the Legacy Open Space uh, Program people came out and visited the, the town. Uh, it was in uh, the two thousand two timeframe. And the field basically still looked like this when they made their original recommendations. Okay, so next slide please. Okay. The uh. Preliminary Plan Hearing was an important event which took place in two thousand five. The important thing was that there was strong consensus on the part of the town for the preservation of the Meadow as an open space. Uh, many people uh, spoke to make this case. Next slide. Okay, so. The critical thing is that. Um. We talk about the preliminary plan. But the thing to understand is that even though it's called the preliminary plan. This particular plan is the one that actually set. All of the conditions for exactly how the Casey at Mill Creek property was developed. Um, once it was set. There, there was. There was no real deviation from it. Um, what was on there was what they had to do. And so as a result of uh, the Planning Board vote, which was unanimous. They added a dedication of approximately twelve acres as the Legacy Open Space Resource. Including approximately ten point five acres of the designated open field. And approximately one point five acres of a forested hedgerow adjacent to the field. And the rationale for the preservation of the Meadow is on page nine of the same document, which is on the next slide. And this is not paraphrasing. This is lifted in its entirety between the two quotes from the preliminary plan. And it basically asserts that. Um. The Meadow was determined to be significant according to several Legacy Open Space criteria. And they listed three. Um. Basically Heritage Resource of the Town of Washington Grove. Um. Fact that the site contributes to the Legacy Programs Heritage Theme. And if preserved as open space, the site would serve as a protective buffer. Of the significant heritage resource that is Washington Grove. Over fifty-seven percent of the town is preserved as forest today and the preservation of this open field. Would preserve a rural viewscape on the last remaining unprotected side of the town. Next slide. So. Our problem ensued because it took so long for the Operations and Use Plan. To, to be implemented. I mean, literally, we started out. With, uh, I think the Darrell, um. Put together the Legacy Meadow Committee uh, around two thousand ten. Maybe early two thousand eleven. Um, and. They came up with a. Uh, a draft plan uh, by. You guys came up with. Uh. Like summer of two thousand eleven. And then they started working with Brenda Sandberg at the Parks Department. Um. And actually. They worked out a good relationship with her and they came up with an Operations and Use Plan. From the Parks Department, which was actually presented to Washington Grove Town Council in October of two thousand twelve. Um. Unfortunately, and I never understood quite why this was, but it wasn't presented to. The Parks Management until October of two thousand thirteen. And mowing instead of starting in two thousand twelve. Uh, started two years later around March of two thousand fourteen. So. The plan that the town had originally wanted. Uh, was one that had some discreet clumps. Um, about three of them of trees that would provide wildlife shelter. Uh, and because of that, um, they asked. Brenda to agree to leave cedars that were at least four to five feet tall and. I. And the problem started because of the lag in when that was agreed to and when the mowing started. Uh, the mowers. Basically, the trees were taller and the mowers not only left a lot that were four to five feet tall. Uh, they left a lot that were smaller than four feet tall too, because it was just an easier mow for them. Anyway, um, when I realized how many cedars were left in the park, uh, I talked to them. Both as mayor and subsequently as meadowly as on, which I was for the next three years after I stepped down as mayor. And they always told me, oh, we're so sorry, we're understaffed. We just can't do anything about it now. But my point is that the impediment to the cedar removal was their budget and not that they weren't being told what they needed to do. Or that we were being indifferent to it. Next slide please. Okay. So when we get to the considerations for the current plan, which um, uh, Bruce is going to be going over. Um. The point I would really, really like to make is that. If the town were to get to the point where they were to demonstrate that the open rural vista is no longer valuable to the town. Then the rationale that makes our Legacy Open Space easement different from the usual Montgomery County Legacy Open Space is eliminated. And one of the reasons that Bill Roberts was so. Um. Adamant, thank you, Ernie. Adamant uh, about. Let's emphasize the fact that this is a Meadow. And we don't want them to think of it as Legacy Open Space because they have a lot of flexibility in terms of Legacy Open Space. Legacy Open Space could actually be diverted later for things like soccer fields or. In a pinch, school sites, which would have been a consideration at one point for that particular Meadow. So. My point is that we don't want to. Allow it to appear as though we no longer value. That open space as part of the buffer that protects the historic town. Um. So there's many good reasons to proceed with the Meadow Restoration Proposal. But I personally believe that the long-term protection of the town's eastern border is the most important. That finishes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgette. Okay, so now uh, Bruce is going to, Bruce A. is going to uh, uh, take up the uh, Phase Two. Um, proposals that uh, that um, the Parks Department has uh. Has to move forward on the restoration, so.
Right on the slides.
Yeah, ready, ready when you are. With the slides. Okay, so yeah, thank you. Um, I'm going to give a, actually a brief overview of, of the whole project. But I will be spending most of my time on what I think is the one really controversial item, and that is the Phase Two Tree Reduction. I could have the next slide. Uh, just for, for anybody who wants to know more about the project, if you go to the town website, you go to the. Community section, you pull down till you see the Meadows Committee. Uh, tab and you click on that and you get to the Meadow Committee landing page. There, there's a lot of documents on there, but if you go to the part that Christine has set up as the major documents related to the committee. These two that I've circled in red will give you a very quick introduction uh, to the journey that we've been on and going into the. Next few months ahead. So the first one, the updated Meadow Restoration Plan comes from Montgomery Parks. It's an update of the plan they gave us in December of two thousand twenty-four and with the, uh, the new version is just a month ago. And the second document comes from the committee and that's a, that's a timeline. Of what has happened and what is projected to happen in the next few months. And we will be updating that. In fact, uh, I'll probably be sending Christine another version of that one within the month. So as things, as things change, I will keep that one updated. Next slide. So, you know, briefly, what we're looking at ahead, uh, and John already mentioned, we're going to have a planting event, Trees and Shrubs. Uh, to thicken the tree line between the two meadows. That's on October twenty-eighth. And if anybody wants to volunteer, please reach out to me and we'll get you on the list. Uh, Montgomery Parks is also uh, in the process of uh, refreshing the signs, the park signage. They've ordered the wood. We're just, at some point, they're going to show up and, and re, uh, redo the signs. We're expecting more non-native invasive control by parks before the end of the year and we'll be doing additional Weed Warrior activity for the non-native invasives. Um, two new volunteers have uh, agreed to build some more uh, bluebird boxes and I actually saw one today. It's beautiful. Uh, so we'll, we'll be maintaining the bluebird trail over the winter. And we have volunteers who are doing bird counts and plant inventory so that we're tracking the, the, we're monitoring the condition in the park. Next slide. Then in the first half of two thousand twenty-six, that is when probably in January, the Phase Two Tree Reduction would happen. Uh, also the Once Annual Mowing. Uh, around February. Uh, Parks has a plan and it's in the doc, in the new document to do spot removal of aggressive woody saplings like the uh, persimmons and. Non-native invasives like the uh, autumn olive. Um, there'll be bluebird maintenance, uh, trail maintenance after the mowing. Probably a third planting event. This one will be again, uh, wildflowers uh, in the Meadow itself. We'd like to hold an educational and celebration event sometime next summer to, you know, show off what's, what progress has been made. Uh, and then there'll be additional maintenance and monitoring activities for the, for the rest of that uh, period. So that's a, that's kind of an overview. Now, the, again, uh, the one thing on here that I believe is controversial is the tree reduction. So the rest of my presentation, I'll, I'll focus on that. Next slide. But I, but first I'd like to say we are seeing progress and uh, some very nice photos here. Anna Spector on the left took a, a photo of a native thistle. That is something that popped out in, in one of the vacancies. Uh, in the Meadow. Uh, the milkweed picture and the monarch, that's one of mine. It seems to me there's a lot more milkweed. Showing in the Meadow this year and that's, that's. It seems to me there's a lot more milkweed showing in the meadow this year, and that's that's fabulous, not only for the the monarchs, but the milkweed bugs and 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 others. And David Stoppak took this picture of a native bee balm, and this is one that we planted in May. So we we are seeing that some of the planting was successful. This isn't the only one. But again, we're we're getting to the more diversified native meadow plants that we want to see to make it work as an ecosystem. Next slide. So, you know, we've heard a number of objections to the tree reduction. I've captured a bunch of them here. I'm going to go through them one by one. And, you know, I I hope I'm going to do justice to the to the objections, but we, you know, we're in this period where we're seeking feedback. So I'm not going to read them now. Let's just go through them one by one, starting next slide. Okay, so so one was that the the cedars are needed for carbon capture. And, you know, I believe in climate change. I think everybody on the committee does, and that natural carbon capture is is essential. It's part of what we need to be doing. The reality is both trees and meadows do it, and carbon capture by meadows is more secure because meadows store most of their carbon underground. So if there's a wildfire event, a hurricane, a tornado, a heavy snow, disease that rips through the cedar monoculture, the cedars will give up a lot of their carbon to the atmosphere. The meadows store it underground. But the big picture is that it it really doesn't matter. It's a it's a rounding error between what the trees would do and what the meadow would do. We need twenty four times more trees in all of Washington Grove to offset the town's greenhouse gas emissions. Twenty twenty one, the sustainability work estimated our emissions, our town's emissions were over six thousand tons, and the sequestering by all the trees in the grove was only two hundred and fifty tons. So, you know, the answer is we got to get our emissions down. That said, we love trees, and we have multiple committees that are planting trees, and that's great. But unfortunately, you know, the the simple answer that the trees will save us, and we don't have to make other changes, it it just, the math doesn't math. Next slide. Okay, this is one we we've actually talked about a lot, that, you know, we've done enough already. Parks has said, if the if the percent tree cover is less than twenty five percent, they'll work with that land as a as a meadow. And, you know, I've tried to get clear explanations to this. I've gone back and forth with parks a number of times, and I've come up with these these diagrams that I think explain what this actually means. So if you take this twenty by ten rectangle as a rough representation of the conservation park, if it had nothing but native meadow grasses and wildflowers, if it had no trees at all, that would be all meadow, and that would be the ideal meadow. Ground nesting meadow bird likes less than one percent tree cover. So in that scenario, the whole twelve point five acres would be a meadow. Next slide. This is twenty five percent tree cover, and there's zero meadow. Zero meadow. So this is not an exact representation of what we've ever had, but it but it does bear some relationship to what we were having with the cedars self-seeding themselves and spreading throughout the meadow. We had lost the view shed. There were, you know, unless you were looking down a straight trail, you couldn't see across the meadow. We didn't have big area of a treeless expanse. So you can, you know, so twenty five percent tree cover is not something magical. It's not like if you're twenty four point nine, you have a meadow, and you're twenty five point one, you don't have a meadow. You can be a twenty five and have absolutely no meadow. Next slide. Now, this might start to look a little more familiar. This is twenty five percent tree cover, but now you have a meadow. And, you know, we, again, might look a little familiar. There's a band of trees along the east edge of the meadow. There's a gap in those trees to go to the lower meadow. There's a band of trees along Pisia View Court to block the view of that new subdivision. There's a band of trees along Ridge Road, and there are some islands of trees inside. And if if it looked like this, now we have a meadow with twenty five percent tree cover. Next slide. So the Phase Two plan presented by Parks and in that revised document calls for the removal of thirty five more red cedars. There were thirty four that were removed in Phase One, so that'd be a total of sixty nine. I think you can see from this aerial view, there's still a lot of trees. But it, but they're, the principles that Parks used in the selection are are listed here. They want to expand the core area. That's the meadow. They want to create more natural boundaries around the edges of that meadow. And then the third criteria comes straight from the the grove itself, the focus on the removal of diseased or distressed trees and maintaining sufficient cover to block the view. So that that's grove specific. That came from us. The other two are just general principles of maintaining a meadow that that the meadow restoration program is following. Next slide. Okay, this this is, I call this the the aesthetic objection, and, you know, beauty's in the eyes of the beholder, and people see this both ways. But we enjoy walking through the treat areas in winter. We enjoy the evergreens, and the cedars screen the ICC. Well, the majority of the cedars will still be there. You'll still be able to see cedars. There will still be wooded paths along the periphery on three sides of the park, and the revised plan recognizes the need for the screening. That's, we're having this planting event. It'll be, I don't have the exact number, but forty plus trees and shrubs that'll be going in at the end of the month, just not in the middle of the meadow. Next slide. Yeah, I'm a Simon and Garfunkel fan, okay? Slow down, you move too fast. You know, can can we just do this more slowly? Can we have more time to adjust to the changes? Well, Phase One was done in winter, so we saw what it looked like in winter. We've seen what it looked like in spring. We've seen what it looked like in summer. Now we're coming into fall. And so in in terms of the major visual impact, I I think honestly, we we've had a chance to see that, and I I don't know why having, you know, six seasons or eight or twelve would would really add that much more value. The other thing is that it is very clear from this less than a year that the cedars were inhibiting growth. We we have a situation of two clashing ecologies. We have a meadow ecology, and we have an early transition forest ecology, and they are at war with each other. And, you know, we we walked the meadow the other day, and somebody asked me, can you point out where the cedars were? And it's not easy, because you can't see stumps, and you don't see holes. You know, it filled in. There's a seed bank there, and it filled in. And it filled in in part with things that we really wanted, like the milkweed, and in part with things that we really didn't want, like Chinese bush clover. And so, again, Parks revisited its plan. It came up with largely something, you know, resembling what it had originally. There's a slight reduction in the total number of trees removed. I think it's five fewer trees. And there are additional actions to address the current state, like the Chinese bush clover, like the the persimmon. But, you know, they've they've looked at it, and they've come to the same conclusion. We really have a strong working relationship with Parks right now, and we have good momentum. And if we're not going forward, we're actually going backward. The 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 cedars that are targeted for removal are going to get bigger. They're they're shading, they're crowding out things, and and things are actually getting worse. And just a reminder, none of this is a town of Washington Grove expense. And it's it, you know, it's Parks responsibility for doing the doing the work. We're just volunteers. Next. Okay, good question here. Can we change the plan? And and this was raised in the in the context of the tree reduction. But we could look at it more broadly, too. I'd say the short answer is we can't do it on our on our own, as as John said. Parks has the easement. If they're, if what they're doing is consistent with keeping the park having a, you know, the open vistas in a meadow, then it it really is their decision, and they have the experts. I think we should respect them. You know, visit Rachel Carson Park. You can see what they're doing. They've been doing this for years. And that group did not exist when Georgette was trying to make her calls all those years ago. That was part of the problem. Now they recognize the importance of meadows, and they have this expert team. That said, they've been very willing to work with us and respond to our input. And it's great to have that kind of cooperative relationship, and I don't want to lose it. So they've made multiple adjustments to the plan, and we want to get the feedback now. If there are things that people really want us to, you know, take back and see if Parks can do something a little differently, you know, I I wouldn't rule that out. That's what this, that's what this period is about. Next slide. Okay, and, you know, another argument, we we love our trees. And yes, we do. You know, I think a lot of people were attracted to Washington Grove because it's a tree community. It's a beautiful thing. That's why we have these committees that that manage the forest and the and the and the urban forest and and even, you know, meadows with parks is planting trees. But the tree reduction in the meadow is, in my mind, very consistent with our legal agreement with Montgomery Parks. And we have less than ten acres of that land. I think, John, you just said there's two hundred and twenty five acres. We have less than ten acres of that land that can become meadow, or that, you know, it 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 won't be that much with with what we're doing. But that was the original plan, that of the of the twelve plus acres, about ten acres was going to be meadow. So I think we have to ask ourselves, what's the better act active land stewardship, you know, accepting the restoration plan or not? Last slide. So on on the right, this is a quote from the Meadow Management and Restoration Program of Montgomery Parks. If you don't manage a meadow, it will revert to forest, which ours was doing, become overrun by non-native invasive plants, which ours was doing, and eventually the native plants and animals would be eradicated from the area. And if we do that and other communities do that, we will continue to lose meadow species. We have lost more than fifty percent of the population of meadow birds since nineteen seventy. And we've all heard about endangered, you know, monarch butterflies and other things. We either are part of the solution or we're part of the problem. And I think we have an opportunity with with this unique asset we that the town worked so hard to save to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bruce, for that thorough review of the work and also about the addressing the what was a very controversial issue right here. And I suspect for some continues to be controversial issue. So now, you know, once again, we're now, we're done with the presentations. Unless there are questions, but the council needs to decide whether this is all they wish to do on this. Alternatively, somebody could, the council could support the Parks Department's Phase Two program. That would be a an option which, in my opinion, would continue to assert the the town's interest in continuing to be a star. Or you could oppose or oppose parts of the plan. Those are all options. So I leave it open. If we don't have a motion to do something, we won't discuss.
I'd like to make a motion to defer discussion until we obtain resident input.
Here, a second.
I'm not sure what the timeline, is there a timeline on this?
I believe the timeline is they're starting some of the other parts of the program this fall, the tree removal. If you're asking that, would be in early spring, next year before March.
January.
January, I say before March. Right, we have funds, and that's the appropriate time to do it.
Who's the liaison? The council liaison for this?
So so the thing is, is there's still time to to get resident input and and for us to vote in in, say, December, if we're going to go and do this in January. The reason it's in January is because we're looking for the ground to be frozen so that heavy vehicles could go in and do what they need to do. So there's still time. And and I know from talking to some of the residents, especially at Mount Ridge, well, even on this side of town, you know, they 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 have some comments and concerns that they'd like to document, so.
They haven't been documented yet.
Not yet, no.
Well, we've had that discussion already. Has anything changed from the first time?
I think, yeah, the message that I'm getting, I guess, is that, you know, they're they're becoming a little bit more clear on on roles and responsibilities. And that's what, you know, Mayor was saying also upfront, you know, the legal aspects of who owns the property, who has the the responsibilities to maintain the property. I think those things are 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 getting clearer for some of the residents. And and so now, you know, with Phase Two, and and that's why I think we broke it up into two phases, right? Phase one, the most sequel we can get, maybe Phase Two, to give residents.
Well, you're the liaison, and this is your recommendation.
So still need a second to, I would recommend, and I'm going to pick up Barbara's her, pass the baton to me. I would recommend that we have a motion to my, this is my, I can't make a motion, to support the Parks Department Phase Two restoration. Strong support. That would be the motion, not approval or whatever, but then a further discussion could be deferred pending receipt of public opinion, and then action might be anticipated in November, in the November meeting. Having said that, work on this motion.
I, so with with the the supporting of the parks, I guess, the yeah, I know that was the first thing that was on the list, but I think I didn't want to send the wrong message, I guess, to the residents who have concerns.
I'll second your motion.
Which motion?
Differ.
Okay.
So further
Further discussion.
Further discussion, and so residents have more, a greater chance to provide comments.
So I would like to offer an amendment to that to defer to November. So, you know, just to obtain resident input is completely overended. But I would say motion to defer discussion until November to obtain this.
Yeah, my initial reaction was I've seen a lot of comments already, and so this has been out there for a while, from what I can tell. So but if you feel as liaison that you're encountering people that still want to have an option to send in some comments, there's no reason not to let them do that. And November is a good timeline.
Yeah.
Get them, I just give them a deadline to get their comments in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, do you? They've been moved and seconded. Then we had a proposed amendment. The easiest thing to do is to vote on the amendment to add the November seventeenth. Was there a second?
I didn't hear the first second.
I did the first second.
Okay.
To Chris's motion.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever.
I have a discussion. All in favor of adding November seventeenth to the deadline. Okay, we have a vote five zero. All right, so now any other comments on the main motion, which is to defer discussion? All in favor in the council? Okay, five zero. We'll then pick this up in in November. Great. All right, we have one more item on the business, to proposal to purchase and install information piazz, which I I give this over to Peter. I'm gonna put up the document. Peter?
Should I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'm making a motion, that's been a long day. I'm making a motion to purchase. two signed kiosks at a, I have to tell you about the cost of that, at a cost of
Just made by time.
Oh, yeah, so that that's my motion, I'm making a motion that we purchase two signed kiosks.
For a cost of around forty-five.
No, it's exactly four thousand, two thousand each. Unless you want to figure out what it's going to cost us to put two holes in them, but basically it's four thousand dollars. No, there's no, it's not if we have them made locally.
Because you're having them made at Woodcrafter, you know?
Yeah, it's two thousand dollars each, and there's no tax, and there's no delivery fee or anything like that. As opposed to it was twenty-two hundred dollars from Timber Homes plus a a shipping fee to be determined from per month, which would be at least three hundred dollars, probably more, so.
I sent you a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. There, so you, Jean is probably, yes, there she is.
Did we, yeah, well, can I can I talk before she does about?
First, there's budgetary.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay, where do you imagine the funds?
Okay, so, yes, this
Reminding everybody, we do not have an item for information.
There's no line item in the budget.
Right, so this is being, I think, okay, so the originally, the way I was looking at this is that the Rec Committee and Gateway Committee are both interested in in having this. And that we were going to take the funds out of Rec and Gateway, and if we adjust our gateway properly, we should be able, we can have over four thousand dollars to do this, but Jean pointed out that this is really a capital expense, and this is something that benefits. What's it? Well.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah, it benefits our home room, so it shouldn't even be, and so ultimately, I would, you know, like to just see this come out of our reserves. It's gonna basically four thousand dollars, we're worrying about four thousand dollars. Especially gonna come back out of the budget, because we're gonna have money left over in both those committees that will be more than four thousand dollars, looking at it.
So there was a very strong request at the beginning of the meeting, one, we have a third one that goes in the park, or is one of these gonna go in the?
Actually, the proposal that I sent out, we do mention that we would probably either rehab that one or there's no, right now, we're only asking for two. The plan was originally four. Because, right, we have four kiosks, and we also would like to work with Bell Properties and have an information center at the post office, but that's not happening until after we approve. We move forward, they 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 want to put that a hole. So right now, we have four key, uh, four easels that we use, and we want to replace those with these, so so John and whoever else, John likes to go around and like to give the poop stations and bless every location. And so it's not, it's, it can be agreed where they go. But the gateway, you know, one place the gateway is interested in is one of the entrances, which is McCauley and Chestnut, that area has always had an easel on the corner right there, and so that would probably be one location. And then we find one other. The whole, the whole point right now is is not to, you know, not not to go with, I have an eight thousand. We're just asking for two so people can see it, they can get used to it, and like, you know, it's gonna be great. I think it's a great DEI step for us. I think that it's a great way for us to communicate with the with the residents. No more papering of little eight-by-elevens all over the place that, as soon as it gets moisture out. You know, that now, it's it's very difficult, that's why Betsy was up there talking in the very beginning about it, because for her, and she just does it for her films, but it is very difficult to move those old when they're not being stolen around, and I I put all the reasons in there. And, you know, to me, I think it's an exciting thing to do, I think it's a, it's it's great communication. And I think they're gonna look great, and I think it's really gonna be good for our neighbors coming in and for residents, so.
Comment. Yeah, so they look good today. But will they look good?
Twenty years from now, guaranteed.
Twenty years from now.
They may have seven. There are two thousand dollars for us to need at a seater. And like, a content, yes.
In in the park, right, we have, we have a board that's pretty, I even took pictures of them, you know, in there, and had the headlights and took a picture of it, it's it's pretty, it's in pretty bad shape.
Now, hold it.
Now, hold it. How did it get there?
It's over fifty years, it's been, I think, forty-something years.
But when's the last time anybody did any kind of work?
No, that, that's a good point. It's it's probably been there fifteen or more years in its current form. It was a much less uh, size and useful before that. But if if your point is these named maintenance, the answer is
Yeah, what is the point?
It doesn't mean.
I guess, you know, we could, you know, and and I I, if you I don't know if this is a good example, but you buy a car, right? You do maintenance on the car, you know that there's maintenance required. My concern is unless there's some kind of a a defined or dedicated, you know, committee or, you know, be a gateway or be a rec or somebody to say, yes, that's ownership, and and that was part of my thing too from this past summer. If you buy it, you own it, and which means you have to keep it.
No, I agree, as the maintenance coordinator of the town, okay, do you see any crooked signs in town anymore?
There was a woodpecker that was over here chewing up chewing up this post, right, because there was a a car that be that larded, it was tearing that, and that cedar.
Yeah.
Right, so again, case in point is, we can't predict.
I have, okay, and I can't, this is like, this is, you know, anything can happen. And we could have a direct call come, direct call come through town, knock down a lot of trees, anything can happen. But I have a, I have a seed fence around my house that's forty years old. And very few, it's cedar, cedar is, is, that's why it's so expensive, it's it's as good as it gets. We have a town maintenance, we have a budget for maintenance, that'll be part of it. And, you know, there's no guarantees in life, but this is a very positive step, I think, in the right direction. And it looks a lot better than those easels that we have right now. So I'm very confident, I'm I personally am confident that this town can maintain these k- these kiosks. I mean, I am.
And 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 so that's like the sign that's in the park, I mean, whatever happened to that? When somebody took time and 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 resources to put it up, e- even though you're saying it's fifteen, twenty, thirty years old.
These are, yeah.
Right, and it's, I haven't seen anything.
It's over fifty years old.
That's not what John said.
That's one that's there, but there's been one there.
Yeah.
No, it was rebuilt, it was rebuilt.
Oh, it was?
Jim Clutchy rebuilt it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, whatever, it's, yeah.
Let me just add to this discussion, the person's point, which is well taken, is that the the a- any, any installations by the town ought to, we we ought to have a way of tracking the maintenance requirements for for that. For example, the tennis shed, we, we, Tom Land's probably not here anymore, but, you know, everybody thinks the tennis shed needs a thorough reefer. Yeah, that's because we have, it's not on a regular, regular maintenance schedule.
Right, right.
You know, and and so I think what Chris is saying, well, you buy these, you know, we 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 ought to recognize that we're going to have to worry about maintenance. Maybe in five years, maybe every one year, who knows? So, you know, the point is taken, but I think his, your realization, Bruce, is that we don't have a a way to ensure maintenance.
Well, it's not just, you know, well, so, but part of that is ownership, right? If we buy it, somebody in town owns it, and then who who's going to, you know, and it's the same thing that I ran into with the fire system here. We had the summer parks and the fire system, and and who's to want, when and where? We need, you know, and that's
we need, but you want to propose that the gateway committee or the rec committee, it takes responsibility for these kiosks?
I think that, I think the town maintenance should should do it.
All all Chris is saying.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm, I'm saying, that town maintenance, as long as I'm doing it, would definitely have responsibility for that. I mean, that's what it should be.
So I have a another question, not unrelated to this, so the primary purpose of these purpose of these is to put up the big two-by-three-feet posters that you make for events, right? So there's not an event going on all the time, there are a lot of them going on, there'll be posters of I'd say the majority of the time, there's not, there's not going to be a poster up in them. So what's going to be up in these kiosks when there's no posters? And who's gonna, you know, is, are notices are going to be going up in there, little pieces of eight by, eight-and-a-half by eleven-inch paper with you know, things on it, yeah, so, and then how how is it gonna prevent it? So the the, one of, one of the examples that was sent out was the Kensington, you know, kiosk. It looks messy as hell, I mean, it's just different colors of paper all over the place.
That's why I saw it right away, I put up there, the mayor's lawn needs mowing. When there's no other person.
But I, can we alternate?
Yeah.
It can just be John's.
After they mow my lawn, they'll put up.
Just John's lawn needs mowing. Yes. So so the reason it's two foot by three foot is it's built just to have the, now, council can, council can make all, you know, what uh, we, first of all, you should, it's exact. And it's like, it says, in the, in the proposal, if you've read it, it says that the Rec Committee gets first, yeah. And Recman, Rec has like seven events.
Right.
So that's what be that, I know that there's other events that the groups have that they'd like to put in there. Uh, Arlene is, really does almost all the promotional material for, you know, if we're serious about it. And she creates the the two-by-three-foot posters that would go with it. And, you know, we don't want, it's just like at the, at the park, it looks terrible also because there's all these different things just stuck up there, they're not neat, they're not organized, and the Rec Committee would take responsibility, what? Well.
The the term looks terrible is a personal opinion.
It is a personal.
It does.
And our scores probably is.
Well, he really said it looks terrible, so.
They always look awful, yeah.
They could be, they could be, they could be organized, I mean, we could, that that's something you're right, that is not, it's just something that's there, nobody, we don't use it. And that's something else, is that this this would really, and it's already been suggested and sent in the proposal that we would update, I don't know if we would replace it, but we could at least update and re, you know, refurbish the one that's in the park, or if we want to come up with the money, just put one of our kiosks there, but the park needs this, this signage in the park that has to be there. So it's not as simple as just what we, it's a different, those are two different apples and oranges, really.
It 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 is, but it's not, it's a sign, it's a wooden sign.
Yeah.
It's deteriorated.
No, I got you, I got your point, all right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if we spend two thousand dollars, is it two thousand dollars down the drain, or is is there gonna be a control process, that's all it is?
And it's, yeah, it's a great point, I'm saying that maintenance, maintenance of what should be, I mean, the council can agree on anything. But if that's, if that's an issue, you know, maintenance would, you know, would take care of that. And I don't know how much, you know, we if if Renee was here, you know, we can get more information on exactly what needs to be done, like it may have to be tunnel oiled or something once in a while. We could do that. And, you know, that's, that's a great comment about how it's being used. Because the only thing that, because it's the Rec Committee and and Gateway, you know, we know what we want to use it for.
Right.
And then, and basically, our, our, what we'd like to do is to say, okay, we're reserving it, and like, like Rec Jan, in January, the first meeting, we really have everything except for the year. And the Rec Committee has said that they would like to, so the captain getting stuck with scheduling. The Rec Committee would take responsibility for scheduling what goes in there.
So you're gonna have some kind of sign-up sheet for putting notices, using the kiosks?
Yeah, it would, it would be something, and there would be a key, which I guess the Rec Committee would have. And they would, they would, they would be responsible for that. And and the thing is that, right now, okay, we're not thinking about all the things, but there are a lot of signs that go up around town during the year. And, you know, I think that one of the things that the council would have to look at, if we agree to do this, if we agree to do it, is basically the rules of engagement of what does, what does go in there, what does it's just like, like the 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 tree stump, which was not a town's this, 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 this thing going on right now, the council didn't approve this event that's happening tomorrow night, but of course, we all wanted, and we're doing it, but can they just put a poster in there, or would the council have to approve it? And so that's something that we're talking about.
Use, use in a second.
Yeah, but anyway, this has got, it's lit, I didn't get it, so, yeah.
Can I make another motion?
Yeah, sorry.
Right, and and this is another one of those two to
You're gonna amend his motion?
Oh, do you have a motion?
He has a motion there to purchase.
Purchase.
To
Purchase two, two, two.
Made by Woodburgers Co. Okay.
So. And it's been second.
And it's been second. Any earlier discussion, if you want to propose an amendment?
Amendment. Right.
John, do, John, am I allowed to make a comment on the?
Comment on the budgetary consequences, please.
No, I'm just, I know Peter feels there's money between Rec and Gateway. The Rec budget is rather tight. It's, it's all the events in town, so I would want to know which events budget is being reduced by how much to to pay for this? I mean, my suggestion is it's a capital expense. It would, the council can vote to pull it from reserves, as opposed to reducing event budgets. That's just a suggestion. But the the Rec budget for events is tight.
Okay, well, events are not capital purchases.
Tight, and so to to reduce the event budgets in order to pay for a capital expense, you know, that's how I interpreted Peter's suggestion. And I don't know that that's the best way to do it. That's all.
I I had a comment on budgeting, I I I I I don't think there's any question that that an information kiosk would benefit all the activities in town, all the bu, all the the Woods Committee, the Forestry and Muddification might have a a reason to use it, anybody might have a reason to use it. So I think Peter's suggestion would have come out, he was pointing to a budget category that was likely to be under spent, that's Gateway. Or they could arrange.
We have three thousand, we have a lot in there for this, besides.
Yeah, okay, so, but but Jean correctly, and I'm wrong, there's probably five other areas that could support this expense in part. So if you make the expense, this is, and 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 this is too small, a budget and an approval of an unbudgeted item to warrant a revisiting the budget by the town as opposed to the sprinkler system, which will be, will have to be revisited. So, I mean, you know, if, you know, I can't speak specifically for the treasurer, but I'm pretty confident that you can fit in this expense. If it doesn't, three thousand doesn't come from the Gateway Committee, then a thousand will come from the the Woods Committee or from somebody else. Because it 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 will equally benefit it, those committees, I don't know, equally, it will benefit them as well, so it's not, that's such a big expense. We really, I mean, the alternative is to say, no, can't do it in this year's budget, it's in the next year's budget, we'll have to defer this until fiscal twenty-seven. I mean, I, yeah, it's only, there's only two ways to do it. Um, I don't think you go to town and revisit the budget for this item. Obviously, we do, we do have to do it for the sprinkler, hey, you could add on this easily. But we don't know about that yet. So you know, I, you know, I the treasurer has made her financial concern, her financial accounting concern known. I'm more loosey-goosey about that. But it's up to the council to approve for the purchase in the near term.
So is Gateway willing to get up some other?
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
And Rec is? Doesn't like, Rec has any money?
No. Rec, Rec, if you think of the all the categories, we're not, we're not maxing out in every category. So, so plus, it's, it's, it should, it 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 should be, it should, it wasn't budgeted, because it's something that's come up. Plus, it's, it's, it should, it, it, it should be, it should, it wasn't budgeted, because it's something that's come up, but it's been going on for months. You know, so, we've been working on this for a long time. And I'd just like to see, you know, let's get moving on, and two other things, that materials, you know, just like with the basketball court. I had a, I had a company that was gonna come in for fifteen thousand dollars and do the basketball court, well, after six months of. Going through bidding and all that stuff, it went from fifteen thousand of the twenty-six thousand was our best, you know, bid. Well, teak is very expensive. That they, they're using, I said cedar, I think they use teak. Something, hardwood, and, uh, it's very expensive, and they, it's been priced out, they can do it for this price, it's gonna cost, you know, it's gonna cost us more money later on. But the rec, the rec committee is, is, you know, obviously, they feel very strongly about it, a number of people, I've gotten many, you know, many. Many citizens have sent me emails, and like. I got, you know, I got one from your group, or a couple days ago, from Patty and Paula, and. Um, you know, asking about, about these, because it is, it's, to me, this is a D E I also, you know, come on, give me some money. Yeah. So anyway, I, I personally think, you know, it's four, you know, well, I get, I get paid six, six thousand dollars a year, right, John, for doing the maintenance. Which I don't take, maybe I can take it from there.
News to me.
That was a budget, I really said, it's stupid, it's stupid to pay somebody when I walk by every day and do that, so I'm up to almost eighteen thousand dollars.
That's exactly what we said.
Yeah, it is.
So we're not paying.
That's right. Alright, well, anyway.
Alright, do I hear any more conversation?
Can I get?
And, and your opposing?
To, to the motion, yes, to. And, and so if I'm talking a bit into purchasing, I'd like to make a limit to, to, to delay voting on the purchasing. Until like we get a more structured approach on. Control, like. You know. Who's going to have, who's gonna be the gatekeeper for the information that you put in there?
I already said that, I, I, it's, it's the, it's the rec committees, don't it?
It, it's the rec and the gate, right?
No, just, just the rec lady, not the.
It's just the rec.
Yeah, they, they, they have ownership of this, at least, and if the count, yeah.
Then of course.
It's in the proposal.
Maybe would maintain the calendar at keys, kiosks.
Right. I'm sorry, you, you were making.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, right, and I mean, if we're just doing this, and if, you know, we're the council, if, if we don't like the way things are going, like maintenance, whatever, we can, you know. We're, we're, we can take care of it. Yeah.
Well.
There's always a thousand reasons to keep postponing everything, but we need to just move on. You know?
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just.
No, I would, well, okay, I'm sorry, I should, so can you try this, make in your, um, method? So you can talk.
So, um, Chris, I wrote through the, um, a re- request that someone's vote is concerned, addressed, and therefore, action be deferred. Is there a second? There are no second, no, no amendment is not before the. The council, go back to the division, was, anyway, manual criticism. That's. It's a vote. All in favor of the motion? I see three, Rob, you leave? Rob?
He's on screen.
He's on screen.
I'm here. Sorry.
Loading on the purchase of the two, uh, kiosks for both of us. Your favor?
Yes.
Okay, all opposed? That's gonna stay abstained. Alright, we've got four in favor. Round the votes, well, abstention. Okay. So, um. Will we spend the money, can we get a formal proposal from whoever's going to do this?
I have it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll say.
Does it have to approve actual spending?
No, I, I, so, um, okay, one, uh, one other thing. Is, um, the speed signs, they're in, they're in, oh, yeah, so, um. We can have that installed, but you have to, we have to come up with a location, so. I know you like to do that, and Chris and Mary will be back, but.
Mary had blocked, uh, a lot of the roads that we had suggested, and so, and you suggested a couple more, so.
Let, let me suggest, once again, Steve is a great advisor on this, or maybe we don't need him in this case, but, uh. We need some specific locations, and then exactly how are we going to install them?
We're gonna, we're gonna use the sleeves so that we can move around, but we just need to get, like, you could probably come up with a, well, you want to just start out with one or two, wouldn't you? I mean, two, and. But movable.
I would recommend these be locked.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can do that.
But that's differs from our other sleeves, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I talked to Steve about this, and I think, you know, the issue is, is to get like steel sleeves, and make sure that they're, that they're embedded. So somebody just can't get the whole thing up, drill a hole through it, and then that way the post could be locked. And, and, you know, because they're, they're not cheap signs, and then.
No.
Mary, Mary had, had walked the neighborhood in the streets, so she's more conscious of, of shade, because these are solar. So.
I, I, okay, well, we're not on that, with the agenda.
Oh.
We don't have the council.
So, so may I ask, because it is eleven oh seven, and we just skip those, we can all read.
Okay. And it's, uh, you know, I do that mostly to be sure people are aware. Um, the first item, however. If you didn't read it, you might not be aware. That, and then, the, the, Nancy King offered to look into funding for the playground. And that, that there was a state grant mechanism, a, uh. Program, that they're now grants, but municipalities were not allowed to apply, and she talked about including municipalities. Instead of that, she has offered to put for, uh, another state bond grant. For up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for playground renovation. This is a hugely better deal. The application process is much simpler. Uh, as I informed the playground committee, it's, uh. So, uh, and the timing is okay, they, they, they need a warm. By sometime in January, um, so if we get our master plan, we don't, and they're not going to need. For us to say we have a master.
Please.
They won't require that, but we can mention that we are, you know, have all the. Established method that we want, so, this is great, I was trying to make sure everybody knew that, if, if we get that. Everybody's discussion about costs. Will be considerably less. Concern. And you have. Six years. I believe, it's been, it's been the bomb, we got one in twenty-two for stormwater, I think we go to twenty-eight.
Wow.
Where we have to spend that money. It's a reimbursement, you don't get the money until you. Actually spend it.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, I thought everybody wanted to know that, okay. Other than that, then let's, let's move on to the next meetings, it's on November seventeen, we've talked about it, it will be at six thirty. Hearing on the seven, the voting text, and every, ready, ready, at seven thirty. Okay, I have it at seven, but it, don't be challenging. Alright, we're hearing objections to a, a adjournment.
No.
No.
This, this was a question.
Okay.
Um, if, we want to put up a stop sign, does the council have to approve that, if we just, like?
Yes.
Wait, I was saying.
Why, it was, under what auspices was he putting up the stop sign?
The, uh, water, uh.
Good night. Good night.
It's, it's incredibly, incredibly dangerous. Of McCauley and Washington, but by the other side. Right, that's a language we heard, I don't know, you know, there's no warning on that. Yeah, it is, it's, and I go there, and it, it's. I don't, I don't know, that's why I was, I was just gonna.
Let me end the meeting here first.
This is for the, come on. The other thing is, the other thing is that we used to have white lines in front of our stop signs, which tells people, people are much more happy.
Where the heck is mine?
Stop versus just rolling through all the time. And because all, you know, the roads are great a thousand times, um, we. We don't have any, I don't think there's any place where you have a white line in the stop signs.
Where am I? Right over there, but I don't.
Can't find your cursor?
No, I can't find your cursor, there's a way to go home somehow.
I don't know if the council has to do that, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Quit.
You're on.
I know, I'm in the wrong place. There, there, it's back.
Well, I mean, this is more a nori fan, it's, it's, you know, this well, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was put up by the Eagle Scouts, yeah, nineteen ninety nine.